Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dan Grotnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. That's it, you got me right. Welcome to today's review session and special public meeting of the City Planning Commission. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin Cerulo, Crowell on Zoom, Commissioner Goodrich in a moment, Kermani, Mann, Marine, Dr. Osorio, and Commissioner Rampershad are here with us today. Thank you all. Before we get to today's agenda, I'd like to go over some recent news from the Department of City Planning. First, I'm very happy to report that last week, the City Council voted unanimously to approve the Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan. For decades, this part of central Brooklyn had been frozen in place by antiquated zoning that restricted housing and encouraged a low-slung and auto-centric streetscape despite the area's great access to public transit and jobs. With last week's vote, it will transform into a more dramatic, dynamic, and pedestrian-friendly mixed-use corridor with 4,600 new homes, including 1,900 income-restricted affordable homes, along with 2,800 permanent new jobs. The plan also commits around $235 million in investments to improve open space and street safety, bolster tenant protections, and enhance other neighborhood infrastructure and amenities. This includes $135 million for a comprehensive redesign of Atlantic Avenue, as well as improvements to playgrounds, community gardens, and other public spaces throughout the area. The Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan was built through years of community collaboration, extensive engagement with local electeds, partner agencies, and stakeholders. I'm deeply appreciative of the leadership of council members Hudson and Ose in getting this over the finish line. Congratulations to everyone at the Department of City Planning who helped us get to this point, especially the stellar team from the Brooklyn office, some of whom are here with us today. As we wrap up one neighborhood plan, another begins. In May, City Planning began public engagement for the White Plains Road Neighborhood Plan. Announced in partnership with council members Kevin Riley and Eric Dinowitz, this community-led process aims to deliver homes, jobs, and neighborhood investments along White Plains Road in the Bronx. We started gathering input with a kickoff info session in the neighborhood and the launch of an online survey to hear from New Yorkers about their priorities in this area. I encourage everyone who lives or works along White Plains Road to get involved in this important planning process, and you can find the survey and learn more at nyc.gov/whiteplainsroad. One more big neighborhood plan update, the New York City Departments of Transportation, Environmental Protection, and Design and Construction recently completed Pershing Square Plaza, a new multipurpose public space that provides a respite from the hustle and bustle of Midtown, located on Park Avenue West between 41st and 42nd Street East. East, yeah, my notes say west. West is done, west was done years ago. East, between 41st and 42nd Street, the open space was funded by the East Midtown Governing Group that was created as part of the Greater East Midtown rezoning. Very, very proud of all of this. It's a great example of how smart planning can leverage private investment to deliver public benefits and shows how this neighborhood plan continues to pay dividends many years after its approval. I want to give a special shout out to Commissioner Cerulo, who in his day job, of course, works very, very hard to make sure that the greater East Midtown area is fantastic and top-notch in every possible way. So congratulations to you.
Thank you, and I'm going to interrupt you in your remarks as we start because it would not have happened despite the vision that Grand Central Partnership had 40 years ago with the public spaces on both sides of the viaduct until our former council member, Dan Grotnick, during the East Midtown rezoning, Greater East Midtown rezoning process, and our former borough president, Gail Brewer, came together to ensure that this public space was funded and built. So the community thanks you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate that. Welcome interruption, thank you for that. Finally, we've got a scheduling note. Since we do not have public hearings this week, we're going to try to get through all this week's business today, in which case we would be able to cancel Wednesday's meeting. And we're going to start with a quick discussion today on the votes that we're going to have. And then we're going to go into a special public meeting to have those votes, and then we're going to start our usual review session. So bear with us. Today's first vote is on Carmen Villegas Apartments at 100 East 111th Street in East Harlem. Proposed by the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development, this 100% income-restricted building would offer 210 new homes, including almost 150 homes dedicated to low-income seniors, as well as a community facility serving LGBTQ plus elders. The site is close to the 6th train at 110th Street, multiple community gardens, and another 100% income-restricted building, Cinderero Verde, which includes the East Side Soul Family Enrichment Center. Our second and final vote is on a proposal for the continued use of existing office space by the Human Resources Administration at 3328 Northern Boulevard and 3408 Northern Boulevard in Dutch Kills, Queens, a short walk from the 39th Avenue NW and the 36th Street MR stations. Moving to new items entering public review, we're going to start with Herkimer Williams, a proposal by a private applicant to construct four new buildings totaling around 1.2 million square feet at Broadway Junction in Community District 5 in Brooklyn. The buildings would include around 990 new homes, of which nearly 250 would be permanently income-restricted, affordable, as well as offices, retail, light industrial uses, and 20,000 square feet of new public open space. To facilitate a portion of that open space along Van Cinderin Avenue, the New York City Economic Development Corporation and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services are co-applicants here, aligning the proposal with the approximately half a billion dollars in public investment into the Broadway Junction Transit Hub. This proposal would give residents and workers easy access to the ACL, J, and Z trains and the Long Island Railroad, as well as a future IBX station. This proposal builds on the city's ongoing investment in this community, which included the Sustainable Communities East New York Study, the East New York Neighborhood Plan, and the Broadway Junction Vision Plan. Staying in Brooklyn, we'll head to Williamsburg to start public review on Domino Site B. This new mixed-use building would include over 1,200 new homes, 315 of them income-restricted. Initially approved as part of the Domino Sugar Large-Scale General Development, this project has since undergone several design changes that require additional land use actions. The final piece of the Domino Sugar revitalization, this building would sit alongside Domino Park and be close to the B-32 and Q-59 buses. Next, we'll head to Jamaica for a city map change. The New York City Transit Authority is looking to close a portion of Tuskegee Airmen Way and an existing traffic island between 165th Street and Merritt Boulevard to facilitate bus circulation and provide parking within the new Jamaica Bus Depot. The existing depot was constructed in 1939 and is no longer adequate to service and maintain the borough's bus fleet. The upgraded and expanded facility is expected to open in 2027. We'll also go over three city council modifications. The first are for the Western Rail Yards proposal to construct a mix of commercial and residential uses on three building sites, along with new open space on this block near the 34th Street Hudson Yards 7 train. The second mods are for 166 Kings Highway in Bensonhurst, Brooklyn. This mixed-use building would include ground-floor commercial space and nearly 100 new homes, of which 30 would be income-restricted, affordable. And the third is for 7399 Empire Boulevard in Crown Heights, which looks to create over 260 new homes, nearly 80 income-restricted, affordable. Finally, we'll hold a post-hearing discussion on what we heard about the Midtown South Mixed-Use Plan and follow up on some Commissioner questions. So let's get to it. Madam Secretary, the floor is yours, and we'll keep this straight considering that we're going to be pivoting briefly in the middle. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, June 2, 2025. The time is 1:10 PM, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a review of votes for today's special public meeting. Okay, votes for consideration today. Staff have prepared reports on Carmen Villegas Apartments Senior Housing, which was presented at the last review session by Audrey. Second, staff have prepared a report on 3328 Northern Boulevard HRA Office Acquisition. Teal is on Zoom to present.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal to...
Teal, one second. We can't hear you in the hearing room. I can hear you on Zoom. One second. If we could turn up the hearing room speakers, one second.
Sure, can you hear me okay?
We still can't hear you, one second.
Can you hear me?
You can, we can, Teal. Go right ahead. Thank you.
All right. The Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal to acquire office space. The Human Resources Administration has been operating out of this space since 2000, and a lease renewal would allow them to continue uninterrupted services while they search for more updated space. The buildings at 3328 and 3408 Northern Boulevard meet operational needs, and the transportation-rich location facilitates easy access by the public and the approximately 328 staff who work at this location. A CPC report reflecting this recommendation has been prepared for the commission.
Great, thank you very much, Teal. Okay. There's nothing else for this moment, is that correct, Madam Secretary?
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to, I believe the right term for this one is to recess the review session, we'll be back to it in a moment, and I'm going to welcome you all to the City Planning Commission's public meeting of June 2. And let's get started with that. Madam Secretary, please begin this meeting.
Okay. Good afternoon. This is the City Planning Commission Special Public Meeting, held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in person in the CPC Hearing Room 120 Broadway Lower Concourse. Today is Monday, June 2, 2025. I will now call the role Chair Grotnick.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Here.
Commissioner Crowell.
Absent, okay.
Commissioner Doak is absent. Commissioner Gold is absent. Commissioner Goodrich.
Commissioner Kermani.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner Madden.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, May 21, 2025.
Great. On the minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes. Thank you, Commissioner Kermani, for the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition or abstention? Thank you, minutes are approved.
Scheduling calendar numbers 1 through 11, scheduling Wednesday, June 18, 2025, for a public hearing to be held in person in the CPC Hearing Room 120 Broadway and remotely through the NYC Engage Portal.
Great, I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, for the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition or abstention? Seeing none, motion carries, resolution is approved.
The next part of the calendar is the Report section on Page 7. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 12, 13, 14, and 15, Carmen Villegas Apartments Senior Housing, CD 11, calendar number 12, N 250147 ZRM, calendar number 13, C 250148 ZRM, or ZMM, calendar number 14, C 250149 PPM, calendar number 15, C 250150 PQM, and the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments, disposition of city-owned property, and an acquisition concerning Carmen Villegas Senior Housing for favorable reports on calendar numbers 12, 13, 14, and 15. Chair Grotnick.
I vote aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
I, um, I did not know that we had a vote today. That is because I spent this morning incredibly stressed out trying to read the documents and the materials and prepare, as always, and I missed today that we had a special review session, but I'm going to take the time to talk about that. I'm actually stressed out right now. I would really like for the packets to come earlier than 5:00 PM on Fridays. It makes my life incredibly stressful, especially as someone who's neurodivergent, but even apart from that, it is incredibly hard as Commissioners to prepare for meetings meaningfully and be able to review and ask questions and vote on projects without having to spend their weekends or Monday mornings reading hundreds of pages of documents. This has already been raised by multiple Commissioners, and it's incredibly stressful. I'm actually not sorry about what I'm saying. I'm sorry that I'm taking so long to say it, but, um, I don't know if I'm having ADHD, but I would like for this to please change without it being framed as it always is when Commissioners raise any kind of concerns as annoying or an attack on staff or not a priority.
Would you like to, would you like to vote on these items?
I am not able to vote on it because I was not...
Okay, understood. Okay, so we'll mark you, we'll mark you as an abstention. I've got, I understand the request. I do want to note, first of all, at no point do we ever regard anything as annoying or not a priority that's coming out of this commission as it relates to staff or an attack on staff. This is a, I think this is a fair request, and in fact, we have had a conversation about it and are going to make efforts to do more and better on this front. In fact, maybe the Secretary can address this if you'd like. Go ahead.
Very noted, Commissioner. Thank you for sharing that feedback, and we're actually working on implementation to roll out earlier, release the materials, which will have guidance for, I think, in the next week or two. So that is some feedback that we really appreciate, and it actually helps us too with our planning for getting things out earlier.
Okay, so thank you. Always certainly welcome to take feedback to the department.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, let's keep going.
Commissioner Kermani.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Yes.
Commissioner Madden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 12, 13, 14, and 15. Borough of Queens, calendar number 16, 3328 Northern Boulevard HRA Office Acquisition, N 250174 PXQ, and the matter of an application for the notice of intent to acquire office space, or concerning 3328 Northern Boulevard HRA Office Acquisition for a favorable report on calendar number 16. Chair Grotnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Abstain.
Commissioner Kermani.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Yes.
Commissioner Madden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 6.
Okay, great, thank you. Madam Secretary, is there any more business before the commission in our special public meeting?
No, Chair Grotnick, there is no other business before the commission for the special public meeting. And I'll just note the time of the special public meeting ending is 1:20 PM.
Okay, we are now adjourned on our special public meeting. Welcome back to the review session of the City Planning Commission of June 2. Madam Secretary, let's move to the next item on our agenda.
The second item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment, special permits, site selection, and acquisition in Brooklyn Community District 5. Our presenter is Jessie Hirakawa.
Hello. Awesome. Great, thank you, Commissioners. I'm here to present the Herkimer Williams rezoning for certification today. This is a private application by Broadway Junction Partners LLC with co-applicants NYC Economic Development Corporation, or EDC, and NYC Department of Citywide Administrative Services, or DCAST, on one related action. The project is located in the Broadway Junction area of Brooklyn Community District 5. The applicant is seeking multiple actions that will facilitate the development of four mixed-use buildings totaling approximately 1.2 million square feet with commercial and light industrial uses, with residential above at a total of 988 apartments, with approximately 197 to 296 of which will be permanently income-restricted per MIH, mandatory inclusionary housing. However, the applicant has stated that they are intending to have 100% of the units to be affordable, but they are pending ongoing conversations with the city. Additionally, new publicly accessible open spaces are being proposed. To facilitate the proposal, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to facilitate, oh, sorry, a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an M12 to C64 and M16 zoning districts, a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area and modify the large-scale general development ownership requirements, ACPC special permit to establish a large-scale general development to allow the distribution of floor area across the site, modify height and setback regulations, modify rear yard requirements, and also allow certain uses within the M16 zoning district. Lastly, where EDC and DCAST are co-applicants, an acquisition and site selection of a privately-owned lot to facilitate the access and construction of a publicly accessible open space. The Broadway Junction area is situated in the eastern portion of Brooklyn, where the Long Island Railroad, MTA's AC, J, Z, and L stations merge. The Broadway Junction is the key transit hub and can easily be reached from locations across the Broad, South of Brooklyn, Queens, Manhattan, and Long Island. Travel between Broadway Junction and downtown Brooklyn or lower Manhattan takes approximately 20 minutes to JFK, roughly 30, and Midtown Manhattan can be reached within 45 to 50 minutes. The project area is located between Ocean Hill, Cypress Hills, and East New York neighborhoods. Although the AC line is below grade, you'll notice the confluence of elevated rail lines like the L and the JZ, with rail infrastructure like the East New York Bus Depot and rail yard adjacent to the east that is used for storage of subway cars and maintenance facilities. These elevated structures are a defining feature of the area. Existing buildings in the surrounding area include a concentration of multifamily 3- to 6-story row houses and apartment buildings, low-scale warehouses, bus parking, storage lots, and notably the recently constructed 2440 Fulton Street Office Building with the Human Resources Administration's, or HRNA, located here. Evergreen Cemetery and the recently renovated Callahan Kelly Park is located to the north of the project area. Now that we're situated, I want to speak a little bit to the history of the planning initiatives within the area. Back in 2014, the Sustainable Communities East New York Report was released. It was, it was, it was granted as a funded effort to examine opportunities for transit-oriented development, acknowledging East New York's robust transportation assets. The report increased, or the report recommended an increase in density for mixed-use development along key corridors in East New York that would help cultivate a regional destination with larger-scale commercial and institutional uses around Broadway Junction. Following that report, the East New York Neighborhood rezoning approved back in 2016 resulted in zoning changes in nearly 190 blocks in East New York and the residential areas surrounding the project area in Ocean Hill as well. As part of the rezoning, Callahan Kelly Park was renovated, an investment of approximately $22 million. One of the commitments from the neighborhood rezoning was to study the Broadway Junction area. Moving forward in 2019, EDC released the Broadway Junction a vision for the future report, which noted that the significance of this area as a major transit hub in Brooklyn. The report was a culmination of an engagement process consisting of a working group that set forth a vision for this area. That vision was to create a more accessible and dynamic transit hub and economic center to offer quality-of-life improvements and more economic development opportunities to the surrounding neighborhoods and the city at large. To help realize the goals of that report, and most recently, EDC has secured approximately $110 million for public rail improvements in and around the Broadway Junction area from ADA and plaza improvements to the Van Cinderin Avenue Streetscape improvements investments, which is co-terminus to the project area, where about $20 million in federal funding was also added in support of these improvements. The project area is bounded by Van Cinderin Avenue to the, to the west, Fulton Street to the north, Atlantic Avenue and East New York Avenue to the south, Herkimer Street bisects the project area from the west to east, with Williams Place bisecting the project area north and south. The planned ADA improvements and Sacmin Street demapping are highlighted in orange you see there, which is certified back in March 17, 2025. Additionally, the commission may recall a recent certification last month on April 21st, not last month, it's June, sorry, of a site selection and acquisition to facilitate a park extension at Callahan Kelly Park by the... by the relocation of the NYPD Transit Facility to a location along Van Cinderan here. You'll see in the blue, uh, there's three blue rectangle shapes there. Uh, the action was to facilitate the creation of a future plaza within the rezoning area and directly adjacent to development site, which I'll get into more later. Lastly, I'll note, what is not noticeable from the aerial here is what sits below the north-south elevated rails that bisects the project area. There are two lots that the MTA uses for, uh, parking and, uh, future electronic bus storage, as well as a 60-foot wide street, uh, Williams Place. Within 600 feet of the project area, the surrounding area is primarily characterized by a wide variety of uses from manufacturing, industrial, commercial, residential, community facility, transportation, and utility van uses with a variety of building types. Commercial and mixed-use buildings are generally located along Atlantic Avenue and East New York Avenue and are generally low and mid-rise, ranging from one to four stories in height. Commercial uses within the area are primarily hotels, local retail, and services. Industrial uses in the surrounding area are generally contained to one-to-two-story buildings like warehouses, storage facilities, and distributors. The surrounding area has a variety of zoning districts, as noted there, as a result of the East New York Neighborhood rezoning, which is highlighted in the darker gray there. These include commercial districts and MX districts to stimulate economic growth and improve community resources, as well as low and mid-density residential districts to reflect the existing residential character of Ocean Hill. The project area sits within an M12 zoning district, which is a light manufacturing district that was established back in 1961. Residential uses are not permitted here, and commercial manufacturing uses are permitted up to 2.0 FAR, and community facility uses are permitted up to 4.8 FAR. Here, the maximum base height is 60 feet, after which they are subject to a sky exposure plane. Uh, to the south of the project area is the East New York Industrial Business Zone, or IBZ, uh, consisting of approximately 57 blocks you see highlighted in the light blue to the south. Uh, looking a little bit more closely to the project area from above, the northern lots are mainly vacant or surface parking lot storage right now. The bottom left, uh, block consists of a church, truck storage, a warehouse, and an office building and hotel. The last block on the bottom right is where the NYC Transit is leasing office space for their automated fare collection and electronic maintenance division. Additionally, there is an MTA maintenance facility on this block. And, uh, on the far right, a used car auto dealership. I'm going to use, uh, these photographs to continue to talk about the existing conditions. This first photograph, uh, starts at the northwest of the project area as if we were coming from Broadway Junction or Callahan Kelly Playground, looking south along Van Cinderan Avenue, uh, with the project area on the left and the recently constructed 2440 Fulton Street, uh, on the right. Moving south along Van Cinderan Avenue, you're looking at a gated and vacant parcel one, um, which is a 4,900-square-foot rectangular lot. Moving to the intersection, uh, more south on Van Cinderan Avenue and Harkimer Street, we're looking east into the project area where you'll notice a two-story Calgary Baptist Church on the foreground with the two larger parcels in the background. Continuing south past the church, uh, here is parcel two, which is an approximately 15,000-square-foot lot with a two-story building that has truck storage on the ground floor and a product distributor and studio space on the second floor. Then, on the far right, is a three-story commercial office building. Moving to the southwest corner of the site, of the project area, at Atlantic Avenue, and looking north, turning ourselves around, along, looking north on Van Cinderan Avenue, uh, this is where the future, uh, EDC Streetscape improvements will occur. You'll also notice an entrance to a tunnel entrance at the LIRR East New York Station on that, uh, bottom left of the photo there, along with the development sites on the right. Turning to the east, looking down Atlantic Avenue, on the right side is, is that East New York Avenue, Long Island Railroad Station, under the arches at the split level of Atlantic Avenue above. There is a hotel located on the left slightly out of view that has a setback. Moving along Atlantic Avenue to the east with the station behind us now, looking north along Williams Place, you'll notice the elevated rail structures above the street and adjacent MTA-owned lots that will be used for future electronic bus parking that I mentioned earlier. Shifting slightly to the northeast towards East New York Avenue and parcel five, uh, which is the largest lot at approximately 51,000 square feet. It is utilized as a warehouse, parking, uh, and a shop and offices for the New York City Transit Automated Ware- Automated Fare Collection and Electronic Maintenance Division. Moving to the easternmost portion of the project area facing west towards parcel four, uh, we're at the intersection of Harkimer Street and East New York Avenue now, uh, where a 22,000-square-foot lot is occupied by a used auto dealership with several small buildings related to, uh, that dealership. Continue, continuing around, heading north on Harkimer Street, uh, looking down, uh, the center of the project area, you'll notice on the left more structures related to that, uh, previously mentioned auto dealership. Wrapping around clockwise onto Fulton Street, uh, looking south at parcel three, which is approximately 17,000 sque- 17,000 square feet, uh, is an unimproved parking lot with storage and mostly covered, uh, by fence and overgrown landscape. Continuing around and looking and, uh, turning back towards parcel three, you'll notice the elevated structure along, uh, Williams Place is starting to come back. And lastly, bringing us back to the middle of the project area along Harkimer Street, uh, you can see, uh, more of that elevated rail infrastructure that bisects this project area from the north and south. All right, so zooming back up over the project area, you can, you'll see that there are four blocks within the development sites, uh, bisected by that elevated structure, uh, with the bottom right one split into two different parcels. I'll note that the areas in the red, uh, are, although part of the rezoning area, they are not considered part of the development sites. These lots are either under elevated structures, have future plans to become open space, or currently have no plans to redevelop like the church and the hotel. The applicant's proposal consists of four new buildings totaling approximately 1.2 million square feet with approximately 988 units of housing, uh, 494,000 square feet of commercial space, 59,000 square feet of light industrial use, and 20,000 square feet of open space. Parcel one will consist of 40, 4,900 square feet of publicly accessible open space that you see on the bottom there. Parcel two will consist of Building B, to be developed at approximately 186,000 square feet with commercial retail use on the ground floor and residential above, with, uh, at approximately 263 units. Parcel three will consist of Building C, uh, and be developed with approximately 250,000 square feet total of commercial retail on the ground floor with residential above at 341 units. Uh, there will also be approximately 4,100 square feet of publicly accessible open space that consists of sidewalk expansions and plaza space for planting, plantings, trees, uh, seating, and movable, um, tables along with signage. Rotating around the project area, uh, to continue talking about the proposed developments, uh, looking at parcel four, uh, which shares a block with parcel five, uh, consisting of Building D, which has approximately 278,000 square feet, uh, with community facility and retail uses and, uh, 384 units above. The applicant will note that the applicant also analyzed an alternative scenario here, uh, to potentially have two to eight stories of that community facility use. Uh, they're, they're currently looking for a large institutional tenant. There will also be 68 accessory parking in the cellar with one loading berth. There is also approximately 3,600 square feet of publicly accessible open space along Harkimer Street you see there on the bottom left, uh, which plans to have planters, seating, and movable tables as well. Parcel five, uh, uh, in this image is behind parcel four, uh, would be developed with approximately 514,000 square feet of commercial and light industrial use within Building E. Um, it would be situated on top of a two-story retail podium of approximately 76,000, 76,000 square feet, sorry, with commercial office and/or light industrial uses above. There will also be 119 accessory parking spaces in the subcellar with six required accessory loading berths, loading berths. Lastly, for here, for this parcel, there will also be approximately 72,000 square feet of a publicly accessible open space that will contain planters, seating, and more movable seats as well. And so to facilitate this, this applicant's proposal, there is a series of actions that are being proposed. I'm going to use the following slides to walk through each action in more detail, uh, starting with the zoning map amendment. All right, so first, the applicant is proposing to rezone the project area from an M12 zoning district to a C64 and M16 zoning district. This rezoning boundary of the M16 would, uh, consist of the western portion of the block bounded by East New York Avenue to the south, Williams Place to the west, and a portion of Harkimer Street to the north, and 160 feet to the west of the intersection at, of Harkimer and East New York Avenue. Uh, this is mainly over, uh, parcel five, uh, portion of the block, that last building I described, uh, with the C64 wrapping around the rest of the project area. The C64 zoning district is a high-density, uh, commercial district generally mapped in central locations that are well-served by mass transit. The maximum residential area here is 12.0 in MIH areas and 10.0 for commercial and community facility uses. For buildings that provide qual- qualifying affordable housing, heightened setback regulations allow for a minimum base of up to 60 feet with a maximum base of 155 feet and a maximum building height of, uh, 235 feet. Tower regulations are also acceptable in C64 districts. Uh, I'll also note that within this C64 district, uh, under qualifying sites, the maximum building height can be extended up to 355 feet. For residential uses, no accessory parking is required for affordable housing units, while parking is required for 40% of the market rate, uh, units here. And no accessory parking is required for commercial use. Additionally, the number of accessory loading berths required, uh, depends on the use proposed and the floor area provided. M16 zoning districts are, uh, high-density, li- light manufacturing districts which permit mostly community, uh, most community facilities and commercial uses such as Use Group Six Retail, uh, and Services, uh, subject, uh, in many cases to size restrictions, and Use Group Seven office uses as well as industrial uses that meet high-performance standards. And residential uses are not permitted here. The maximum permitted FAR is 10.0 for manufacturing, commercial, and community facility uses. Heightened setback regulations allow for a maximum street front wall height of 85 feet or six stories, uh, followed by, uh, a, followed by they are subject to a sky exposure plane above. For nearly all uses, accessory parking is not required here, and for the number of accessory loading berths required actually depends on the use proposed and the floor area provided for such use. I'm going to take a sip of water. The applicant also seeks to amend Appendix F to designate the project area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area, or MIH, pursuant to Options One or Two. Option One requires that affordable housing be set aside at 25% of the residential floor area at an average of 60% of the area median income, or AMI. Within that 25%, at least 10% at 40% AMI. Option Two requires that 30% of the residential floor area be provided at an average of 80% AMI. I will note that out of the 988 proposed units, that means, uh, depending on the MIH options, there will be approximately 198 to 247 permanently income-restricted homes pursuant to this MIH. However, I will note that the applicant has stated that they're intending to have, uh, all 100% of their units be affordable. However, this is pending ongoing conversations with the city. In the second portion of the text amendments, the applicant is seeking to amend Zoning Resolution 74-742, which is on ownership, to allow that an elevated rail line be considered a street, and this is for the purpose of continuity of the ownership agreements of a large-scale general development. This is required, this is, sorry, this is requested because the definition in the zoning resolution for a large-scale general development is defined as containing one or more buildings on a single or multiple zoning lots that are contiguous or separated by a street or street intersection. So given that the bisecting elevated ra- rail structures here that you see go north to south, uh, that it's over a street and lots utilized by the MTA for future MTA electric, chronic parking, bus parking, um, the applicant is seeking to allow that. The applicant is also seeking a special permit for the large-scale general development for a series of waivers related to the distribution of floor area without regards to zoning district boundaries, modify rear yard regulations, and modify base and building heights and setback regulations. The Large-Scale General Development Special Permit requires that the City Planning Commission find that the distribution of floor area, open space, dwelling units, and the location of the buildings will result in a better site plan with superior landscape and better relationship among the buildings and open areas to adjacent streets and the existing context. The applicant has stated that with the ability to distribute floor area and to locate certain buildings without regards to the rear yards and heightened setback regulations will result in a better overall site plan and development to better meet the stated goals and address site-specific conditions. Specifically, it will allow developments to relate to adjacent street widths, irregular lock configurations and conditions, and the bisecting elevated rail structures, and provide more construction of new publicly accessible open space on parcel one and several new spaces along Harkimer Street. Uh, more, uh, overall, more to achieve a more feasible development footprints. The first request of that large-scale general development is to allow the distribution of zoning floor area without regards to boundaries, the distribution of floor area from parcel one that you see on the top left to parcels two, three, and four, which facilitate the creation of approximately 4,900 square feet of publicly accessible open space on that parcel one. The maximum floor area that will be distributed from parcel one would not exceed 58,000 square feet. Moving on to, uh, the rear yard and heightened setback waivers, starting with Building B at parcel two, pursuant to the zoning resolution section of 74-743A2, the applicant is requesting to increase the permitted height above the maximum permitted zoning bulk envelope of the proposed C64, which is highlighted in yellow, an additional 60 feet, and where a 15-foot setback is required, a waiver of five feet to request to provide a 10-foot setback. The applicant states that the floor area from parcel one, as well as the building proximity to the, um, elevated rail along its rear would necessitate this additional height. In the rear, highlighted in blue, the applicant is requesting to waive the required 20-foot rear yard for all uses up to 75 feet, and then the required 30-foot, uh, residential rear yard for the next 20 feet above that. The applicant states that these rear yard waivers would allow larger floor plates which would, which may allow potential commercial, community facility, and/or light industrial uses on that lower floor, um, that will help activate the adjacent Van Cinderan Avenue street. Moving on to Building C, uh, in parcel three, uh, where a minimum 15-foot initial setback is required along all the frontages, um, which you see in yellow. A setback relief is requested, uh, along all of them to various degrees. Along Williams Place and Harkimer Street, uh, the bottom and the left side of the site plan, um, towards the intersection and open space, there is a 60-foot, um, minimum base height is required. Um, up to 40-foot minimum base height waiver would be needed to allow the base to only rise 20 feet. The applicant states that this would allow the bulk to be centrally located, providing more room, more room for the at-grade publicly accessible open space along Harkimer, transition for a better relationship to the streets and open space, and increase light air to the street as well as additional distance from the elevated structure. Lastly, on to Buildings D and E on Parcells Four and Five. Uh, starting with Building D, which is on the, your right, uh, where a 15-foot setback is, um, above the base height is required along Harkimer Street, and a 10-foot setback is along East New York Avenue. And so to accommodate open spaces and the unique curvature of Harkimer Street, which you see on that top right there, um, they're requesting to reduce the setbacks to three to four feet where you see those triangle orange areas. Um, at the base, the building is already set back, uh, up to 23 feet in some locations to create a wider sidewalk condition along with smaller plazas to allow for relief for the welcoming sidewalk experience along Harkimer Street. On the East Avenue, uh, East New York Avenue side, which is on the bottom, the applicant is setting the building back six feet to provide a wider sidewalk, but also requesting a four-foot, uh, four-foot from the six-foot setback waiver as well. For Building E on Parcel Five on the left, this building is governed by the M16 zoning, which limits, uh, the street wall height to 85 feet or six stories, followed by the sky exposure plane. Uh, that's why a lot of, more of the yellow shaded area indicates that area where the applicant is requesting, um, that the building goes past the sky exposure plane on the street wall frontages. I'll elaborate more on later slides, um, additionally proposing a two-story retail base at approximately fifty-five feet, fifty-five feet, you see on the top left of the building, and requesting a rear yard waiver, uh, which is in, uh, blue along Building E. To talk more about the highlighted blue portions of the rear yard waiver for Building D, I'm gonna use this slide. For Building D on Parcel Four, the applicant is requesting a full rear yard waiver of the required twenty-foot rear yards at fifty-five feet, which you see there in blue. This allows the lowest point of the proposed envelope transitioning towards the adjacent building and the publicly accessible open space along Herkimer Street. The applicant also states that this would allow for a gradual stepping massing concentrating towards East New York Avenue, which is a very wide street there, allowing flexibility for the potential community facility uses in the first several floors. The section on the left, uh, shows a previously discussed setback waivers requested along Herkimer Street and East New York. Now, in section view, you can see that the requested waivers from the sky exposure plane that we were talking about on Building E, um, and for the rear yard waiver in blue for the two-story base retail that was proposed for Building E. The applicant states that these waivers would allow them to create large, flexible commercial and/or retail floor plates, which are important for attracting major destination retails and uses while shifting the building massing closer to the elevated, since these are the non-residential uses, and towards the wider streets. Onto the fourth action, uh, the applicant is seeking a special permit to allow the use group six retail and service uses with a floor area greater of, greater than twenty thousand square feet within the proposed M one-six zoning district. M one-six zoning does not allow use group six retail use over ten thousand square feet or floor area per establishment. So, under this specific special permit, the applicant is proposing seventy-five thousand square feet of use group six retail and service uses to be permitted within the first two floors of Building E, so that they can locate larger retail, uh, spaces throughout the building, further facilitating a vision for a larger regional mixed-use hub. The last action, uh, requested here is with, is the one that was, uh, quote, with co-applicants E D C and D C A S, uh, they're co-applicants on this combination acquisition and site selection for a privately-owned lot to facilitate the access and construction of a publicly-accessible open space of forty-nine hundred square feet on parcel one. As mentioned earlier, this is in coordination, uh, coordinated investments with E D C and D C A S for new publicly-accessible spa- plazas and street improvements. The action would enable capital funding to be used for the design and construction of a seamless open space on this parallel and adjacent future Van Cindern Avenue Plaza, uh, highlighted in blue, that was previously certified earlier last month. Following the completion of the construction of both plazas, the Van Cindern Plaza and parcel one here, it is anticipated that the applicant, uh, would maintain the entire both public spaces as one, uh, pursuant to a maintenance agreement that they are working on with E D C. A notice of completion of a draft environmental impact statement was issued on May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and identified significant adverse impacts with respect to transportation on traffic, transit, and pedestrians, construction as relates to transportation, and air quality with mobile sources. Mitigation measures are identified in the D E I S and will be explored further in the final environmental impact statement and the D F E I S. All right, so pursuant to Local Law Seventy-eight of twenty-twenty-one, uh, which was effective in twenty-twenty-two, this application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity because it would increase the permitted residential floor area of at least fifty thousand square feet. Although the project area is in C D five with the Equitable Development Data Explorer, it locates the project area in C D sixteen, uh, because the boundaries, uh, are being used for data, uh, from the public use microdata areas, also known as P U L A's. Uh, as such, uh, key neighborhood and demographic conditions for both community districts were, were, were discussed in the report. The applicant states that the proposal would produce nine hundred and eighty-eight homes with approximately two hundred and forty-seven income-restricted units, depending on M I H options, as mentioned before, in a location that has an annual median household income of approximately forty-six thousand. You'll notice, uh, as a result of the displacement risk map, this neighborhood's population area is determined as a higher, uh, displacement risk. Based on the twenty-twenty census, nine percent of the population identified as Asian, non-Hispanic, roughly five to seven percent lower than the rest of the borough and city respectively. At the highest, forty-three percent of the population identified as Black, non-Hispanic, as well as compared to the twenty-seven percent within Brooklyn and twenty percent within the city. Thirty-nine percent of the population in this area identified as Hispanic, Latino, or of any race, as compared to nineteen percent and twenty-eight percent within the city and borough, sorry, the borough and city respectively. At the lowest, three percent identified as white, non-Hispanic, where over thirty-five to thirty-one percent is for the borough and city respectively. Between, between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, the Asian, non-Hispanic population in the area increased at the highest rate of sixty-four percent compared to the forty-three and thirty-four percent increases in Brooklyn and the city respectively. The Black and non-Hispanic population decreased by thirty-three percent, three percent, sorry, compared to the nine percent and five percent for Brooklyn and the city respectively. The Hispanic, Latino population in all areas, East New York, Starred City, and Brooklyn and the city, has seen smaller increases from ten, four, and seven percent respectively. The white, non-Hispanic population in the area decreased by four percent with eight percent increase in Brooklyn, however, there has zero, been zero percent change in New York City as a whole. Moving on to the adjacent neighborhood tabulation area for Brownsville and Ocean Hill area, uh, you'll notice as a result of the displacement ma- map here, the neighborhood tabulation, tabulation area is determined as an intermediate to higher displacement risk. In the Brownsville and Ocean Hill area, based on the twenty-twenty census area, one percent of the population identified as Asian, non-Hispanic, roughly thirteen to fourteen, fifteen percent lower than the rest of the borough and the city respectively. At the highest, sixty-seven percent of the population identified as Black, non-Hispanic, compared to twenty-seven percent within Brooklyn and twenty percent within the city. Twenty-three percent of the population in the area identified as Hispanic, Latino, of any race, compared to nineteen and twenty-eight percent of the borough and the city respectively. At the lowest, three percent identified as white, non-Hispanic, where over thirty-five to thirty-one percent is for the borough and the city respectively. Between twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, for Brownsville and Ocean Hill area, the Asian, non-Hispanic population in the area increased at a rate of a hundred and twenty percent compared to the forty-three and thirty-four percent increases in Brooklyn and the city. The Black, non-Hispanic population had a zero percent change compared to the nine percent and five percent for Brooklyn and the city respectively. The Hispanic and Latino population in all areas, Brownsville, Ocean Hill, Brooklyn, and the city, has similar small rec- uh, percent increases from twenty-four, twenty percent, four percent, and seven percent respectively. The white and non-Hispanic population in the area increased at the highest at the, a rate of two hundred and fifty-five percent, uh, with eight percent in Brooklyn, however, as mentioned earlier, there was zero percent increase, uh, in New York City as a whole. In summary, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from the existing M one-two zoning to a C six-four and M one-six zoning district, a zoning tax amendment to establish an M I H area and modify the large-scale general development, uh, ownership requirements, A C P C special permit to establish a large-scale general development to allow the distribution of floor area across the site, modify height and setback regulations, and also modify your, uh, rear yard requirements, and to allow certain uses within the M one-six zoning district. And lastly, where E D C and D C A S are co-applicants, a combination acquisition and site selection action of a privately-owned lot to facilitate the access and construction of a publicly-accessible open space. And to finish us off, lastly, in an area that has already really been deemed as a regional and local transportation hub, these actions will facilitate the development of four mixed-use buildings totaling approximately one-point-two million square feet with commercial and light industrial uses with residential above, that total approximately nine hundred and eighty-eight units, um, some of which, um, approximately one-ninety-seven to two-ninety-six, which would be permanently income-restricted per M I H. Additionally, new publicly-accessible open spaces are being proposed here. That completes, thank you, that completes my presentation and, uh, happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Jesse. Um, let me start with a few questions before I go to, uh, colleagues. The special permit for allowing use group six. Uh, so, this would allow retail with floor area of more than twenty thousand square feet in, uh, the M one to M six areas, right?
M one-six, yes.
Today, we restrict that to ten thousand square feet.
Yes.
Without the special permit.
Yes.
So, what, what is the, what, what is the thought process here about twenty thousand square feet? What's the benefit? How should we be, uh, thinking about this? And put it in context for us.
Of course, so, um, the M one-six district, you know, for, that's correct, I restrict certain uses beyond a certain point, and actually, when the applicant was putting together this application and we were, um, looking at the zoning districts, um, and, you know, since the adoption of zoning for economic opportunity and newer districts, uh, this is, these districts were kind of proposed pre-C E O, Z E O, sorry, and so when looking for kind of a non-residential district, which was kind of the original goal, uh, was, this was actually the best option at the time, like, the C seven flexibility didn't exist at the time, so that the, and also, the applicant also stated that they wanted to maintain a manufacturing use within the area as well.
Okay, got it, so there was, there is now a, a district that might have been used, but it didn't exist at the time.
But also, what's different is that they wanted, you know, the, the manufacturing use, sorry, I'll also expand that, um, they wanted to create more flexibility for opportunity to have larger, kind of, uh, larger uses of the retail, whether they're looking at, you know, larger retail clothing, office flies, like, kind of big-box retail, or options that more flexibility for larger uses, that would reflect, like, a regional or local use.
Okay. Let's talk about the open space for a second. There's one of the, uh, actions here is the acquisition and site selection for a privately-owned lot.
Yes.
For publicly-accessible open space.
Yes.
Um, we recently certified, um, I suppose, part of what would be the future, uh, public space back on April twenty-first.
Yes.
Um, and tell us what is anticipated to happen here. Uh, if, if this were to proceed, it's approved, and we now have, um, the site selection and acquisition of two public spaces right next to each other, which would have presumably been approved on slightly different timetables, wh- what happens next and why are they separate?
Sure, uh, so what happens next, uh, right, the city, uh, provided, you know, we're both certified, assuming today, certification, um, as contemplated, the city would, is going to acquire a temporary construction easement over the privately-owned one on this project, and the idea is, once construction is completed for both sites, um, the applicant would grant a city kind of public access to over the open space, from then, once it's, the construction is completed, there would be, um, the, the applicant would then take over, uh, maintenance over both sites as a whole, right? Because, as you said, Dan, um, that if they were, looked at separately, you know, we wanted to make sure, the city wanted to make sure that there was kind of a coordinated effort in designing and construction, a unified open space instead of two separate ones, right? And so, the idea is, you know, the city will construct and build it, both sites, and the applicant will maintain both sites as one.
Okay, thank you. And last question from me, the, the phasing of this, um, development, obviously, it's not anticipated, presumably not anticipated to all go up at once, um, or we'd understand that the, the phasing aligns with the lettering of these buildings, so B first, C second, or parcel two first, and parcel three second, tell us.
That is, that, that, that assumption is probably correct, yeah, they're looking at, uh, they do kind of look at, since it's a large scale, right, there are some conditions and discussions that could be added to, like, a legal document, right, restrictive declaration, and part of that is talking about kind of an order, or how do they tie open space, uh, development with new building construction, but in general, the letter and the numbers were looked at as a, as a potential order, right? So, Building B was residential, C residential, and then moving around to the last one, which was E, which has the commercial and manufacturing proposal.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Let me go to Commissioner Benjamin.
Hi, Jesse, thanks for the presentation. I have one question about the, um, racial equity report and the rental levels. Um, one, because right now, it's an eighty-twenty, it's, they're looking for Option One or Option Two, I know, but in the data from applicant's report on housing and opportunity, it suggests that seventy-nine, eighty percent of the units will be not income-restricted, but that those rents are cheaper than the moderate-income rents. If you see, it says that for a studio, the non-income-restricted would be twenty-two-hundred-and-forty dollars, the moderate income would be twenty-seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars for a studio. I don't understa- and it has income limits for the non-income-restricted of eighty-nine thousand for a one person and a hundred and thirty-two for two per- for a four person. I don't understand the numbers, what that really means.
Maybe, uh, I'm gonna try to rephrase, I, I understand your question as well. You're asking, and it seems like the, what's stated by this graph here, right, we have, uh, the non-income-restricted, uh, is looking at, right, in the studio for twenty-two forty for the studio and thirty-three-ten for the two-bedroom, however, in the M I H, and this one, I believe, this graph, I believe, uh, is echoing Option One from the, from the racial equity report, and so, you're, uh, we're saying that in the hundred percent, right, A M I is higher than the non.
Income-restricted.
Yeah.
And the income-restricted income has, seems to have an upper limit, so if that could just, it's on, uh, both the community board six and the other community board show the same. So, I'd like to understand what that really means, are they anticipating what you said, that they're gonna have a hundred percent affordable, and so that somehow those incomes in the non-income-restricted are really their attempt to show the affordability?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't know what these numbers mean.
Absolutely, no, thank you for clarifying that question, I, um, again, that's definitely, the question is how, where do they come from, or how do they determine the non-income-restricted?
Right, and then, you know, my general question, if that's correct, then why would anybody ever get a moderate-income apartment when the non-income-restricted apartment costs less money?
I can definitely
Okay.
Have the applicant speak to that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions? Commissioner Mann.
Uh, thanks for the, the detailed presentation. Um, I just want to talk a little bit about the kind of streetscape.
Okay.
Um, and kind of, ah, public realm questions here, because it seems like one of the challenges of developing here is just all of the infrastructure, roads, transportation, all around it, which is probably one of the reasons why we haven't seen development here to date. And so, I just was curious if, one, there've been any potential, you know, exploration of any street closures to allow for some more space at the ground floor, given the scale of development here and the sort of tightness of the quarters, in particular, kind of the potential closure, uh, of Herkimer Street to create a sort of campus?
Mm-hmm.
That's one question, just understanding the ground floor experience here, because it's very loud, as you all know.
Sure.
Um, air quality's probably not great from the, the transportation, the roads slicing through here, um, there's roads that go below grade, there's roads at grade, then there's trains above, so, um, just trying to understand from a public realm standpoint, if there's been any thoughts about, yes, street closures, and also, I saw in the E I S, there's transportation impacts, right, for some of the, um, stairway, uh, up to the, um, Broadway Junction platforms, and, you know, again, it just, it strikes me that if we're doing T O D, we should just, you know, keep the T in mind here, um, and I was curious if M T A or you all have been having any conversations that would help reassure us that, you know, we're not adding density to a point where, you know, this place can't accommodate, and also that we're actually making investments to circulation pathways, given, again, the very, I'd say, non-legible pedestrian environment here? So, just some, you know, two questions, one around the sort of ground floor public realm and street closure opportunities given the density, um, and the second's just really about transit access, and how do we actually improve it, not just add dens- about transit access, and how do we actually improve it, not just add density around it?
Yeah, sorry. Absolutely. So to your first question about uh street closures, right, has anything been explored? I, if, um, actually, the applicant at the scoping meeting, um, when they scoped, uh, I'm forgetting the exact date right now, but it's probably over a year ago, when they did scope, there were, there was an initial portion of the proposal to include uh closing a portion of Herkimer Street to kind of create a larger kind of su- uh super block, if you will, um, to have larger flexible um development for a place. Uh, however, since the scoping meeting and to filing and to moving forward in the last year, the applicant has decided to um cha- change the application in that sense to have the separate blocks that you see now and maintain Herkimer Street, uh, which is why a majority of their publicly accessible open spaces proposed as part of the large scale was focused on along Herkimer Street, um, to, to modify, um, to, to attack some of those concerns. Um, to your uh conversation about-
Jesse, sorry, could, could you provide any more, I didn't realize that about the scoping hearing, but any more detail or understanding of the thought process? Was that because DOT was concerned, or is that because they just felt it was too much of a headache?
Sure, um, I can, I think there, there is a larger conversation, I, I, I don't wanna state that it was like a headache or anything, but I think there were just larger, larger planning efforts, as you were saying, like talking to, um, like what, what the transportation impact may be, or what other things may be, but I can definitely, um, we can probably have to collect more of those thoughts and get back to you when the applicant is here we could talk about.
Okay. But it was, it was at the scoping hearing, yeah, because it just strikes me that this is, this is a bit of an island, this triangle.
Uh huh.
Um, it's gonna be hard to get there unless you're jumping off the subway right there, and even then, it's not gonna be easy to get there.
Uh huh.
Um, and so it, it kind of needs to be a bit internally facing in some way as a coherent place.
Uh huh.
Um, and I don't, you know, given the density that they're proposing, I just don't see how at a kind of at-grade pedestrian circulation, it'll work particularly well.
Sure. I think that's, that's also speaks to the, to your point about the accessibility of pedestrian and coming from Broadway Junction. I think that also comes with and moving on to, that kind of answers the, the other question about coordination with like other agencies, right? Coming off of Broadway Junction, moving down Vansinderan Avenue, right, there's the two public space pauses that really are focusing that connection between Vansinderan Avenue, right, connecting the LIRR to the south and Broadway Junction, really along Vansinderan Avenue, as this getting, you know, over a million of street improvements from Vansinderan Avenue, and, and those two public plazas, uh, you know, being adjacent to two-four-four-zero Fulton Street as well. Ideally, like the applicant has talked about how those plazas can also help alleviate kind of the moving in and connection between the elevated, because, yeah, the elevated does kind of create this physical barrier, right? And so the idea is having those more open spaces along the elevated and focusing uh plazas on Herkimer Streets, uh, the applicant is hoping that this is a better, you know, thought-out site plan.
Okay, yeah, I just think that when, when you have to hook underneath Herkimer and make that left if you're coming down, um, that's a lot of below, above-grade rail that you're walking underneath.
Uh huh.
Um, in an area today, it's not particularly well-lid, it's not particularly probably, she, doesn't feel probably particularly safe, because there's not a lot of pedestrians on the street today, so it's, it's that kind of link, I guess, east-west, that feels like it's sort of unresolved here.
Uh huh.
Um, as a way to get underneath, it's sort of the same problem that the Jamaica Avenue or the Jamaica rezoning has a little bit, of what do you do with all of this rail and make it a neighborhood?
Yeah.
Um, and so I just was curious, again, doesn't sound like there's been much conversation with the MTA then about lighting underneath it, or improvements, or am I?
Actually, no, that's, I don't know the exact details of all the improvements, but this map definitely captures a majority, going all the way even to the northern portion of the, that east portion of Herkimer and Broadway that you're speaking to. There's, through federal, city, and local funding, they're all working on a variety improvements from on Broadway, on Vansinderan, um, but well noted on your point for, um, I can figure out if there's a more detailed list of these exact improvements, if they do cover some of your-
Yeah, I just, sorry to belabor the point, I think it's really, again, just about getting that Herkimer east-west
Okay.
Connection clear, because I can see why running north-south along the rail, it'd be sort of, I can see a little streetcape, streetscape would improve that, but if you're really hooking into the development site
Uh huh.
On Herkimer, and that's where all the density is on that side.
Uh huh.
I'm not sure the Vansinderan streetscape is sufficient, really, for getting people from Broadway Junction to this development site, if I'm understanding the pedestrian connections here well.
Uh huh.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I hear that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me go to Vice Chair Knuckles.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Uh, I've actually, over the last decade or so, advocated in another forum for um resources and development for Broadway Junction, so I'm glad to see this happening. Um, could you just refresh my recollection, are twenty-four forty Fulton-
Yes.
Is that entirely HRA in that building?
No.
Or, uh, do you know what other kinds of uh commercial uh presences are there now? I'm just curious.
Oh, it's future retail as well. Um, HRA only takes up, I think there's approximately, um, the square footage is dropping my mind actually right now, but it's approximately a thousand of their workers, employees there.
Uh huh.
Um, which is not the whole building.
Right.
Um, but other than that, future retail and office.
Thank you. And do you know, and it's quite preliminary at this point, I know, but uh, do you know what the um light manufacturing vision is there now for these, for these buildings?
From the applicant?
Yeah.
Uh, I, they don't have, they haven't really spoke to us too much right now, they just wanted to reflect kind of the potential future and also have that availability, but I can definitely make sure the applicant comes prepared to talk to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation and the materials, I, I found them really, really clear.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for addressing our questions, uh, building on a couple of things that have been said, maybe starting with the last question from Vice Chair Knuckles. So the, based on your response to the Chair's question on the phasing, you know, it, it concerns me that that's the, the last building is the building that is actually gonna help host the light manufacturing, and so if you can specifically share with us, eh, as soon as you have it, I don't know if you have it now, but sounds like you don't, but the, the, what is gonna happen with the existing businesses? I understand that under seeker um requirements, there is no significant direct impact displacement because of what you mentioned, although because of the rationale in terms of the uses that you're introducing, et cetera.
Sure.
But, but I really wanna understand what's gonna be the, kind of like the plan for, for the existing businesses in terms of where are they gonna go, and whether or not, you know, are we actually anticipating how to subsidize the cost for rent space there? Um, so that's just more of a comment. The, the, the question that I had, kind of going back to one of Commissioner Mann's question, and I think, you know, also to give you a chance to fully address the question on the impact on transportation. It sounds like the, the DEIS is already flagging that standard approaches to widening the stairway or increasing the vertical capacity are not gonna work here? And so, again, in the spirit of elevating the T in TOD, can you share a little bit of, you know, what other alternatives you may be exploring, or what we will see in the final EIS?
Sure, I, I think to, to your question, I, I will back up a little bit about, I think I went too far ahead, but maybe going back to some of the ongoing larger investments from the city, right, one of the major uh improvements, uh, in general, recognizing that this is a, you know, larger regional hub, and there's a lot of ADA requirements. I think the last, uh, maybe it was over a year ago that was certified, there was a discussion about, you know, uh, working on the, the platforms, the ADA accessibility, the ramps, the stairs, a lot of that already, recognizing the larger regional hub of this, um, and those investments are, you know, going on already and start kicking off with the MTA. Um, to your, and so, you know, I think, you know, recognizing the regional hub of this, you know, I think those investments are working to address the future and potential needs of it. However, I think to your exact question about what are the impacts related and called out with the EIS, um, I'm, I don't wanna misspeak on the EIS, I may have to get back to you on like what those exact impacts are.
No, thank you. Understood and fair enough, it's just that this is gonna be important here for exactly those reasons, because there's a lot of investment already planned here, but there's a significant adverse impact that we need to specifically address. The, the, the other question, also related to some of the points raised, um, so understood that eh there isn't a significant adverse impact on open space, but, you know, but there is a roughly fifteen percent reduction in passive open space here, again, well above the standard, but since, since this is kind of like a, I see it as an opportunity to, to really increase residential density at a point where we have the transportation in, eh, infrastructure. I, I wanna eh understand a little bit, what are the neighborhood wi- neighborhood impacts or, or the, the, the parameters that we should aim for in terms of the adequate amount of open space that we should be planning for? Um, and not aim for sort of like the minimum, but really what's the optimal? And so eh can you, is there um anything you can share with us now, or maybe when we see it later, in terms of how does the open space system work here? Because, again, to credit the applicant, you know, we are increasing open space as well, but it's not clear, I mean, eh, I, I very much agree with Commissioner Mann in terms of the pedestrian experience here is very fractured. So is there anything that you can share with us in terms of how the open si- open space system would work? Eh, help us understand a little bit, you know, how do people get to, you'll propose open spaces, and how, how the space connects with some of the surrounding blocks? Um, perhaps that could help create a context for, yes, we're above the standard, so it's okay, but how are we actually mitigating the fifteen percent reduction as an impact to people who may not be enjoying or able to enjoy the new, but may be taking an impact?
Sure, sure. Uh, I think a, a detailed, I can definitely work on getting a more detailed answer, but I think at the top of my head first is, right, there's the, in terms of what the larger open space network is, right, I think Callahan Kelly Park recently renovated, great open space, the Sacmin Street de-mapping, right, removing street, allowing more open space here. Um, and as you were speaking, I actually was remembering, I think it was the last, last review session, was this, this area was looking at
Yeah.
Figuring out an easier way for the city to have open space in this area, right? So I think that is probably the larger attempt of how the city is approaching, right, the open space near in, but I think that was what I was gonna have, to speak to the open space. I think your question about the larger open space network, um, could probably have to get back to you a little bit on that.
Thank you.
Do you have something else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie, Director of Environmental, um, so one of the ameliorating factors of the open spaces also its distance to large regional parks like Highland Park, um, and so while, you know, those are outside of the technical study area, they're taken into account qualitatively, those are a little bit further of a walk, but another one of the metrics, as you heard about during the um acquisition presentation, was about the walk to parks, um, guidelines, and how Parks is really trying to close those gaps, being within half a mile um of big regional parks or quarter mile of smaller parks, um, so really having that access, but I think talking about the actual pathways to get to those open spaces is really, um, particular and something that we can discuss with Parks.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then just finally, one, one last question, you see, the, in terms of the sustainability measures, I couldn't find in the report much on that, and I'm wondering, you know, what's, are there renewables proposed, or, or how does the green roof sort of like overall plan would work? Again, eh, an opportunity just to understand, how are we, what are we aiming for here?
Yeah, there hasn't been much uh discussion on what exactly like the roof stuff, stuff like that will be, but I can definitely have the applicant speak to more, like what the sustainable and renewable stuff that they kind of do.
Okay, so then just to say, something that I, I feel is, would be important here is, again, I think that this is an important precedent that we're setting here, again, to eh accomplish places where we have the infrastructure to increase residential density, but, but it should also be a significant commitment to eh create a strong foundation for distributed resources, infrastructure to maybe subsidize
Uh huh.
Energy, resilient energy for the neighborhood itself, um, and so I, given the fact that, you know, this is a city proposal, I, I think that we need to sort of like raise the bar as much as possible.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, and with that, this item is now certified, and we will look forward to picking it up down the line. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Okay. The third item on our agenda is a certification of special permits, zoning text amendment, a modification of a previously approved special permit, and a modification of a previously approved restricted declaration in Brooklyn Community District One. Our presenter is Lucia Marquez Reagan.
Great, welcome, hello.
Hello. Uh, hello, Chair Grandnick and Commissioners, I'll be presenting Domino Site B for certification. This is an application by Domino A Partners LLC and Domino B Partners LLC to facilitate the development of Domino Site B, an approximately one-point-one-seven million square foot mixed-use building containing one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-two residential units and twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty square feet of commercial uses. The project area is located at two-six-four to three-fifty Kent Avenue in the Williamsburg neighborhood of Community District One, Brooklyn. The applicant proposes a series of actions to facilitate the development, including a text amendment to allow floor area exemptions from existing buildings within a large-scale general development by special permit within a specific geography, special permits for this floor area exemption, as well as to allow the locations of buildings without regard for height and setback regulations, and to waive permitted obstructions, a special permit to waive commercial loading birth requirements from two, two births to one, and to modify a previously approved large-scale general development to reflect changes to the proposed building and site plan. The project area is coterminous with the Domino Large-Scale General Development and is roughly bounded between Grand Street, Kent Avenue, South Fifth Street, and the East River. The development site in pink is bounded by South First Street to the north, River Street to the west, South Second Street to the south, and Kent Avenue to the east. The project area is approximately point-six miles from the South Williamsburg Ferry Station, point-seven miles from the Marcy Avenue J M Z station, um, to the southeast, which provides service between Forest Hills and Middle Village through Manhattan, as well as Jamaica and Lower Manhattan. And the Metropolitan Avenue G Station is approximately one mile to the west with service between Long Island City and Kensington, and Bedford Avenue L Station is point-seven miles to the northwest with service between Chelsea and Canarsie. The B thirty-two bus runs adjacent to the project area with service between Williamsburg and Long Island City, and the Q fifty-nine bus with service between Williamsburg and Rego Park. The surrounding area is generally characterized by a mix of residential, seen on this map in yellow and light orange, industrial in purple, and commercial, darker orange and red, as well as community facility in blue. Residential uses in the surrounding area include elevator apartment buildings, including tall towers along the waterfront, and six-to-eight-story residential uh contextual buildings in the upland area, converted industrial loft buildings, and three-to-four-story row homes. Uh, a variety of commercial uses, including retail, restaurant, and office uses, semi-industrial, auto-related, and warehouse, warehouse uses, uses are mixed among these residences. East and north of the project area was included in the Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning in two thousand and five, which rezoned much of the neighborhood, but did not alter the blocks directly adjacent to the east and west, or rather, east and north, which remain M three-one heavy manufacturing districts mapped uh back in nineteen sixty-one. East and north of these M three-one areas, there's a special mixed-use district, MX eight, uh, with residential and manufacturing district pairings, as well as a large swath of R six district uh to the southeast. Um, notable community facilities in blue include PS eighty-four Jose de Diego Middle School with adjacent William Sheridan Playground, one block east of the project area. Previously approved actions in the surrounding area include the Greenpoint-Williamsburg two thousand and five rezoning, which rezoned one-hundred-and-eighty-three blocks, uh, block area extending along East River, Brooklyn's East River waterfront and adjacent. As a part of the rezoning, the largely M three-one zoning districts to the north of the project area were rezoned to R six, R eight residential districts, and the blocks east of the project area were rezoned a special mixed-use district. The Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning did not rezon the project area, um, again, or the areas directly north and east of the project area. River Ring rezoning in tw- in two thousand and twenty-one, this proposal rezoned waterfront blocks that were M three-one to C six-two to facilitate two future mixed-use residential towers containing forty-nine and sixty-four stories. The two blocks west of the residential towers were rezoned, um, M three-one to M one-four, and as a part of the two-thirty Kent Avenue rezoning in two thousand and twenty-four, one of the M one-four districts, uh, N M one-four district was mapped, um, to be an M one-four, R seven-X mixed-use district to facilitate a new mixed-use residential and commercial building. The development site outlined in pink is within the twenty-eighty future floodplain in the lighter blue, and portions are currently mapped within the two, two, the twenty-fifteen preliminary flood insurance rate in darker blue. The large scale has been- The large scale has been under development for over ten years, in order from north to south. Site A was completed in two thousand and nineteen, Site B is the subject of this application. The refinery was completed in two thousand and twenty-four, Site E, the first building to be completed, was completed in two thousand and seventeen, and Site D completed in two thousand and twenty-four. The project area images will move north to south, beginning on the north, northernmost edge of the project area at Site A. Moving counterclockwise around Site A, we'll start on the corner of Grand Street and Kent Avenue facing south. The next image is Grand Street facing west, towards the East River and Grand Ferry Park. The third image, we see River Street facing southwest, or southeast rather, and lastly, corner of South First Street and River Street facing southeast, the development site is on the right-hand side of the image. The development site, Site B, in the first image, we can see the corner of South First Street and Kent Avenue facing west, the project area surrounded by fencing. The second image is South Second and Kent Avenue facing northwest. From the corner of South Second Street and Kent Avenue, this image shows a view up Kent Avenue north, uh, with Site A beyond Site B. The second image is on the same corner, turned towards the East River, the refinery on the left-hand side of the image, and Domino Park, um, a block upwards. On the corner of South Second Street and River Street, we are now facing the southwestern most edge of the project area, or rather, development site facing Kent Avenue. To the east, rotating north, in the second image, we see Domino Park to the left and the development site on the right. The refinery can be seen in these four images, the first on River Street facing south, the refinery can be seen on the right-hand side of the image, the second image is a view down River Street facing south, and eh, the refinery can be seen on the left-hand side of the image, and you see Williamsburg Bridge uh, in the background. The third image is of the refinery on South Fourth and Kent Avenue facing north, and Domino Square can be seen on the left. The refinery is on the right, uh, center right and far, in the far corner, we see Site A, and the fourth image is the refinery and the waterfront public access area, Domino Park, uh, to the southwest. Domino Square can be seen in these two images before you, both at an elevated angle towards the square. The first image is on the corner of South Third Street and Kent Avenue facing southeast. The second image is on the corner of South First, South Fourth, uh, South Fourth Street and Kent Avenue facing northwest. In both images, you can see the open space that's programmed throughout the year. Beginning on the southeastern most edge of Site D, we can see the image, uh, an image of South Fifth Street on the left, the Williamsburg Bridge, and on the right, uh, the site is Site D. The second image, we have a view down Kent Avenue on the corner of Kent and South Fifth Street, and the third, we see it, uh, we're on the corner of South Fifth Street and Kent Avenue facing west closer to Site D, and lastly, we see, uh, Site D on the corner of River Street and South Fifth Street looking north. Domino Park, the waterfront public access area is shown in these four images. On the north, uh, northernmost edge of the W P A A, the first image shows a view on the corner of River Street and Grand Street facing south, you can see the Williamsburg Bridge in the background. The second image is a view of the waterfront public access area facing the refinery, near the, near River Street and South Fifth Street. Moving further south, we're facing northeast towards Site A from the W P A A, and lastly, we are on the southern edge of the W P A A on River Street facing southwest towards the East River and the Williamsburg Bridge. And lastly, the last development, Site E, we begin on the southwestern edge of the corner of Wife Avenue and South Fourth Street looking north, we see Site E on the right and the refinery on the left of the image. The second image is a view of Site E from River Street and South Third Street looking southeast. The third image along South Third Street and Wife Avenue facing west adjacent to Site E, and lastly, we see Site E from the corner of South Fourth Street and River Street facing east. The developments are largely residential, aside from the refinery. Site A consists of two hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet residential, one hundred and sixty thousand square feet commercial. The refinery consists of three hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet commercial. Site E, uh, is thirty, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand residential and eleven thousand commercial, and Site D is five hundred and seventy-seven thousand square feet residential and eleven thousand commercial. The site plan provides four point eight acres of open space. Domino Park, the required W P A A was completed in two thousand and eighteen and contains various amenities along the East River. Domino Square opened in two thousand and twenty-four, contains a large plaza-like space for programming. Um, as well as Grand Ferry Park, uh, north of the large scale. The large scale is categorized into three zoning lots. Zoning Lot One, which contains majority of the residential floor area within the large scale, and includes two completed sites, Site A and B, and open spaces Domino Square and Domino Park, as well as the development site, Site B. Zoning Lot Two contains one building, the landmark refinery building, with only commercial uses, and, and zoning Lot Three contains one building, a lower density commercial residential development upland. The project area has been subject to a series of actions since two thousand and seven. These include a two thousand and seven landmark designation of the refinery building, the original twenty-ten large scale and rezoning, a U L E R P action by the previous owners of the site. The site was not constructed per the prior approvals and was acquired by its current owner. In two thousand and fourteen, Domino Sugar Large Scale was approved with five developments, and Domino Park as well as Domino Square. Numerous non-U L E R P actions to modify approved large scale general development uh, have been sought, including planting, modifications to the planting requirements, modifications to the height, building height and shape of glass enclosure at the refinery building, um, and to modify the massing to increase public access and decrease the width of River Street adjacent to the development site, um, on Site D. Site B is the largest, the last and largest development within the Domino Large Scale. The approvals in two thousand and fourteen outlined a development with a program that included nearly a million square feet, uh, of residential floor area, seven thousand uh, square feet of commercial uses, sixty-seven thousand square feet of community facility uses, which was proposed at the time to consist of a DOE school. The uh, square footage that was proposed in two thousand and fourteen totaled one million seventy thousand one hundred and forty-one square feet. The actions proposed today are modifications to the two thousand and fourteen approvals to facilitate the development of one million one hundred and sixty-one thousand one, two hundred and seventy square feet of residential uses, twelve thousand square feet of commercial uses, no community facility uses, for a total of one million one hundred and seventy-three thousand, uh, five hundred square feet. Site B would consist of one thousand two hundred and sixty-two units, three hundred and fifteen of them income restricted. The applicant is proposing a number of changes to Site B. These include expanded building footprint and reduced sidewalk, increased maximum height of, by fifteen feet, reduced podium height by twenty-three feet, removal of the Sky Bridge, removal of a setback along Kent Avenue, addition of seven-foot wide balconies, and the removal of load, a loading berth off of South Second Street. The applicant is proposing an increase in the building footprint from two hundred and twenty feet in the two thousand and fourteen approvals to two hundred and thirty-four feet, expanding the footprint adjacent to South First and Second Streets to the north and south of the development. The applicant is proposing a two-foot decrease east to west from one hundred and ninety to one eighty-eight. In addition to the fourteen-foot expansion of footprint, the applicant is proposing seven-foot wide balconies to wrap each tower projecting over the sidewalk. This is a view of an upwind connection, South Second Street. The landmarked refinery building is on the left-hand side of the image. The proposed development, Site B, is on the right side of the image. The expanded footprint reduces the sidewalk width adjacent to South Second Street from thirty feet to twenty-one feet. The proposed balconies would begin at fifty-seven feet or five stories and project seven feet over the sidewalk, resulting in sixteen feet unobstructed to the sky. The expanded footprint also decreases the dimension between the refinery building and Site B from an approved in two thousand and fourteen, seventy-five feet, to a sixty-eight foot dimension. This change is roughly mirrored in the northern edge of the site from seventy-five feet to sixty-seven feet. The applicant is also proposing to remove a loading berth from South Second Street. This is a view looking north up Kent Avenue, a city street. The building sidewalk adjacent to Kent Avenue would increase from fifteen feet in the two thousand and fourteen approvals to seventeen feet, and eh, in the proposed development. The seven-foot wide balconies would result in ten feet of sidewalk unobstructed to the sky. The applicant is also proposing to remove previously required fifteen-foot Kent Avenue setback at a hundred and ten feet, and uh, lowering podium height from seventy feet to forty-seven feet, a reduction of twenty-three feet. The applicant proposes four actions to facilitate the proposed development, a text amendment, two special permits, and a modification to the previously approved large scale general development and associated restrictive declaration. The first action is a text amendment to seventy-four seventy-four three, special provisions for bulk to create Section A fourteen, permitting within a large scale in Community District One, Brooklyn, to apply Section twenty-three twenty-three floor area exemptions to buildings that existed on or prior to December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, to exempt floor area and use that exempted floor area in one or more new buildings within the same large scale. The text amendment includes conditions within a newly created Section B thirteen, where the commission may permit the exemption of the floor area in existing buildings to be relocated, as long as such exemptions result in residential amenities accessible to all residents of the large scale general development, and the floor area equivalent to twenty percent of the amount of residential floor area exempted to be allocated to U A P affordability. The second action, a large scale general development special permit pursuant to seventy-four seventy-four three, would apply the newly created special permit to use exempted floor area within the large scale general development, as well as allowing the application to modify the proposed envelope on Site B. The special permit is to apply floor area provisions for multifamily buildings, also referred to as floor area exemptions, uh, to the existing buildings within the large scale. These exemptions include twenty-three twenty-three one, floor area provisions for amenities, twenty-three twenty-three two, floor area provisions for corridors, twenty-three twenty-three three, floor area provisions for refuse storage and disposal. The chart on the right side of the screen lists out the type of floor area exemption and the building of which they originate, for a total of a hundred and two thousand eight hundred and fifty-six square feet of floor area exempted to be allocated to Site B. This would allow two thousand, or rather, twenty-two thousand six hundred and ten square feet from Site A, fifty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty square feet from Site D, and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-six square feet from Site E, all to be allocated to Site B. As a condition of this special permit, all residents of the large scale will have access to all amenity spaces across the buildings, and twenty percent of the one hundred and two thousand square feet of ink, uh, square feet of floor area will be income restricted with incomes averaging sixty percent area median income, um, similar to U A P. The applicant seeks waivers to Section, uh, seventy-four seventy-four two A, special provisions for bulk modifications to increase height, footprint, and remove previously required setback along Kent Avenue. This is to facilitate the development, uh, with a max height of five hundred and forty-five feet, a larger footprint, um, as noted previously, and remove previously required fifteen-foot setback along Kent Avenue, which would have, uh, started at a hundred and ten feet, and it now instead rises without setback. The applicant is proposing to waive twenty-three sixty-six two C, to waive limitations on bulkhead height to produce a bulkhead with a max height of five hundred and ninety-one feet. The applicant also seeks a waiver for, uh, permitted obstructions for balconies that would wrap each tower beginning at fifty-seven feet or five stories. The applicant is proposing seventy percent plain coverage rather, uh, beyond the fifty percent permitted as of right, with the intention of providing seven-foot wide undulating balconies on all sides of the two towers. The third action is to reduce required loading berths from two births to one birth on zoning Lot One of the large scale. This action would permit the reduction of a loading berth from Site B, removing a curb cut from South Second Street, while maintaining seller parking for three hundred spaces accessed uh, via South First Street. And lastly, modifications to previously approved large scale general development to reflect updates to plans and zoning calculations. These updates include the waivers discussed prior, reduction of the base height, uh, by twenty-three feet, and an increase of overall height by fifteen feet. Modifications to the urban design guidelines to remove the previously proposed horizontal element, also known as the Sky Bridge, and modify requirements for mechanical screening to reflect the proposed setback of rooftop mechanicals. A reduction of the amount of floor area transferred from Site, zoning Lot One to zoning Lot Three by twenty-seven thousand six, two hundred and sixty-six square feet, as a result of the waiver granted pursuant to the zoning, uh, Section seventy-four seventy-four three A fourteen, and update to the zoning analysis, uh, included in the large scale general development approved plans reflecting the as-built floor area and parking, um, of the, of the balance of the large scale, including a reduction of overall, uh, floor area within the large scale. In summary, these modifications include an increase in max height by fifteen feet, a decrease in podium height by twenty-three feet, addition of seven-foot wide balconies, an increase of a hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight square feet of residential uses, that includes the one hundred and two thousand square feet of eh, of, um, exemptions, and sixty square, sixty thousand square feet of previously allocated community facility uses, increase of five thousand six hundred and thirty-two square feet for commercial uses, a decrease of the sixty-seven thousand square foot community facility use, no change in parking, a removal of one loading berth, for an overall floor area increase of one hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty-nine square feet. These actions are to facilitate a five hundred and forty-five foot tall development containing one point one million square feet of floor area, twelve thousand square feet commercial, one point one six million square feet of residential floor area, um, one thousand two hundred and sixty-two units, three hundred and fifteen of which would be income restricted. Thank you, that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Um, just a few points of clarification from me. One of them is, one of the actions here is, uh, the inclusion of the balconies. Uh, whereas you have an as-of-right opportunity, as I understand it, of fifty percent coverage, they want to go to seventy percent. Is that right? Okay. Um, it is a little difficult for me to gauge, based on what I see here, as to where the thirty percent is, because it looks like, I see balconies everywhere. So where, which area is, are they proposing not to cover with balconies?
Yeah, my understanding is the, the lower five stories. The balconies will begin on the fifth story and, um, wrap each tower, but, correct?
Yeah, um, actually to clarify, it's the holes that you see here, the circles, those actually, um, those don't count towards the plain coverage. You see where there's like the highlighting, um, from like the sun coming through these holes. I'm not sure if we have a plan of it, but.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, you can kind of see.
I see, the design of the balcony includes holes in the balcony.
Yeah.
I assume in a way that people don't, uh, go through the balcony, but we'll put that aside for a second. But the holes in the balcony don't count toward the balcony, even though from the public perception of the building, you experience it from the outside as a balcony. Is that right?
That's correct.
So what, okay. Do we know the philosophy behind the fifty percent rule for balconies as to what is behind that? I've, obviously, I, uh, we can, we can also follow up as we go. I, I, I don't know it, so I'm interested in knowing why the default is fifty percent as opposed to ten, or ninety, or anywhere in between, uh, because we're asking, being asked for a very specific number here. Okay. Um, let's talk, talk about the setback on Kent Avenue. Um, a fifteen-foot setback is being requested for Kent Avenue. Um, is it also being requested on South First or South Second Street, or only on Kent Avenue?
Um, so there, in the previous approvals in two thousand and fourteen, there was a setback at a hundred and ten feet, the, the building would setback fifteen feet from Kent Avenue. They're proposing to remove that setback, so it would just rise, uh, sheer, I guess with the, the design. Um, so they're removing that setback, there was no setback along any other.
No requirement from the prior approvals on First Street, or, uh, Second Street for a setback, but it did, it did exist for Kent Avenue.
Correct.
In the prior approval, okay. So they're, they're looking to waive out of that requirement, that there be a setback, um, on Kent Avenue, okay? Um, okay, well. Well, that's a conversation we'll have, we'll have with the applicant as, as we go. Was there something else you wanted to add there?
I, I guess I was also going to note that though there was not a setback at however many stories on South First or South Second, there was an increased sidewalk dimension from the approved, so that the required upwind connection, for example, on South Second Street, required sixty, let's see, required sixty feet dimension, but they had provided a, an additional fifteen feet, so that was a, a total of seventy five feet. So although it's not a setback of the, of the building as it rises, it was a, a dimensional increase for.
Oh, I understand. So, well, your, your point is that even though there was no setback required on South First or Second Street, the separation between this building and the refinery next door and on the other side.
Correct.
Uh, was greater than as being proposed here.
Correct.
And the difference is seventy five down to sixty eight feet.
Sixty eight feet with the, with the seven-foot obstruction of the, of the balconies.
I see. So sixty, so it's narrowed by, from seventy five feet where it was before.
Completely unobstructed.
Because there were no balconies?
Correct.
Although balconies could have been included up to fifty percent of the building, correct?
I think I would like to get back to you on, on that.
I'm pretty sure that's right, but let's confirm. So the as-of-right would have been, let's assume for a moment, no, no setback requirement, but fifty percent balcony, seventy five feet of distance between this building and the next. Here, they're proposing seventy percent balcony, reducing the distance between the buildings by seven feet, and the balcony, more balcony, more balcony, the air, the amount of balcony that we would enable, if we enable it, would come out over that sixty eight-foot gap. Do I have it right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I had a question from Commissioner Mardine.
Can you go back to the slide where you're showing the transfer of square footage specifically from?
Yeah, that, that one.
So am I to understand here that on site D, there were fifty, approximately fifty three thousand square feet left over, and on site E, there was twenty eight thousand square feet left over approximately?
So this is related to the text amendment, which allows for, so, I'm going to go back to the text amendment really quick. So they're actually proposing a new special permit, which would allow them to access floor area exemptions that were created, or I should say, modified in housing opportunity to apply them to their large scale. So back in twenty fourteen, these exemptions did not exist, my understanding, but as a part of the special permit and with housing opportunity, they now exist and they're applying to create a special permit to trans, well, to reallocate them to site B.
And so they're proposing to transfer from, is site B a mixed building? Am I, so it does have M I H as well?
Oh, sorry. No. This is all within the previously I H D A.
That's what I thought. And, and buildings, so site E was dedicated as the affordable housing building, is that correct?
Not to my understanding. I, I believe that was.
So, you're correct that there is a more affordable housing in site E, but it's not fully affordable.
Okay. Was there a, an M I H sort of requirement at site? I'm just trying to figure out the transfer of these, the square footage, because I would argue that we're transferring from a building that's predominantly affordable to a market-rate building, and in my minds, I understand that they're going to be proposing, and, and the new building, will they be also proposing M I H units? Yes, they are. No?
There'll be I H units.
I H. So, so voluntary in how, in cursive housing, basically. And what's the percentage in, in, in the buildings, the two buildings that there?
In terms of the breakdown of units, I don't, I don't have that information.
If we can get that, that would be very helpful.
Happy to.
I'm trying to tie, what I'm trying to do is tie in these two transfers to more affordable housing units, is what I'm trying to.
Understood. Happy to, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Medjeman.
Hi. Thank you very much. Can we go back to the rendering of the two buildings, both before that one? Will be good, although that doesn't have dimensions. My, I have a couple of questions. One, what was the dimension between the two parts of the building previously?
Yeah.
In the two fourteen approvals, twenty fourteen?
Okay. So here's the, so the, the two towers, I guess.
Two parts and now two towers.
Yeah.
But they have the same platform.
Exactly. In site, in twenty fourteen, that dimension was ninety feet between the two parts with the skybridge above, and now they're proposing eighty four feet, so it's a, a reduction of three feet, but the balconies would also wrap the towers, so the un-balcony distance is seventy three feet, seventeen feet reduction.
And open, open.
And open to the sky, exactly. Unobstructed.
Right. I mean, one of the design features that had led to certain kinds of approvals was the openness that that design engendered for people on the other side of Kent Avenue to be able to see through to the park and the water. And this design certainly restricts that. And the height of the, of the platform is still the same, or is that shrinking also?
It's shrinking as well, so the podium reduction is a twenty three feet reduction. I'll pull it up here. So originally approved, it was seventy feet. They're proposing forty seven feet podium.
And the texture of the design has certainly changed. I don't know if, how this texture fits in with the other as-built buildings, which were built with, with this texture in mind. Do we have a rendering that would show the relationship between?
In this, you can kind of see a little bit, there's site D missing. I don't believe I have a, a full, actually, no, um, here. It's a little grayed out, but. Yeah.
And is there still open space on the platform?
Um, uh, above the podium, I.
Yeah.
It's, I believe, I believe that's what they're proposing, but I'll have the applicant speak to what the top of the podium will look like.
Okay. I mean, I, I too have some design questions about the balcony and the kind of texture vis-à-vis, is it close enough that they need to get landmarks approval for this change? Is it close enough to the refinery?
I'm happy to follow up. I'm not sure. Can the applicant speak to that as well?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for the presentation and addressing our questions. So really briefly, I, I wanted to second Commissioner Mardine's question, and, and I, I would also very much appreciate kind of like a breakdown of, you know, how exactly is the square footage that we're transferring relate to the amount of affordable housing units that will remain in each building, just to make sure that we understand the impact on diversity in terms of income that is being planned for here. But I guess more broadly, and then in the spirit of understanding the context where these actions are being proposed, I was wondering if you have any information on the status of the community benefits agreement, the community benefits agreement that has been sort of like, that was put forth back then. I mean, can we also, when we see this again, understand a little bit how, how much of that has been fulfilled, you know?
In terms of the, the large, the domino large scale?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, yeah, we can.
Thank you. Yes. I mean, and, and the reason why I'm asking that is, is because we're changing something that had been approved, and this has been, you know, going back to the one ninety seven A plan, the community has had a very clear position here in terms of high-rise luxury residential on the waterfront. And so I want to understand exactly how much of what was agreed has been fulfilled and what's missing, et cetera. The other question that I have, going back to, to the Chair's question on the setback on Kent. So the, I, I, I want to, you, you addressed the, you clarified and addressed the question, but you didn't explain why. What is the rationale for this change?
It's, it's my understanding that the, there's a, the applicant believes there's a need for these like open spaces and balcony spaces, I should say, and, but I'm happy to have them speak more to the reduction of that, of that setback and just rising sheer more at the, at the hearing.
Because we, there was a setback required that we're not, we're taking out. So, you know, the reason why I'm asking this is because here, but also when river ring was discussed, wind impacts were a big issue, and, and not just on the other direction, but also on Kent. I'm, in, in fact, you know, if you go now, forget about kind of like river ring, if you go now and you actually step in and out of the, the walk shed, you can feel it. And so I, I, I'm wondering what the impacts are of reducing those setbacks on Kent. And so what is the basically impact on the pedestrian experience in terms of the, the wind that is being channeled? Same thing goes for in the other direction, sort of like reducing the space between the two towers, and how much, what are the implications of that for the wind impacts that otherwise could be higher and stronger? So I'm wondering if that has been discussed or has come up, or anything that you can share with us now? If not, I'll wait patiently.
I'll be sure to, uh, relay this to the applicant so they're prepared to answer your question.
Fair enough. Thank you, thank you. And then the other, the other question that I had just briefly is, has to do with, so just because you, you brought up, I mean, and, and actually super useful to understand the larger context hence my previous, previous questions, but I know that there were a series, or a series of resiliency measures proposed for river ring in terms of wave attenuation, et cetera, and I'm wondering if, what is the status of, of these infrastructure improvements? I mean, what can we expect is already in the making in terms of actually mitigating potential coastal flooding here?
Absolutely. I will focus on the domino resiliency measures, if that's all right. So the, the applicant has stated that site B would be served by, there's the, the water reuse plant that's currently under construction under Domino Square. The facility, they, they would say, would be, would treat a hundred percent of the wastewater generated on site B to be recycled, but I guess to your point as well, to, go ahead. Oh, oh. And that, they also noted that all electricals would be elevated per standards in critical utilities over, above the second floor, second floor and above, rather than ground floor and cellar. Additional resiliency questions?
Thank you. No, that's, that's very useful, and, and it addresses the question in terms of reabsorption of excess water, but I'm specifically interested in wave action, like what, how are we, storm surge impact, basically.
Understood. Yeah. Happy to have the applicant speak more to that as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Mann?
Yeah, just a quick question on the community facility space. My understanding, and please correct me if I'm getting this wrong, was that that was originally an S C A option to build a public school at that location?
Correct.
So has S C A declined the option to build a public school?
Yes. So the requirement was to, uh, let me pull it up. The requirement was to, at least six months prior to the preliminary design of site B, as you, as you noted, send written notice to the S C A School Construction Authority, and at the end of twenty twenty two, the S C A indicated that they did not wish to pursue a school on site B, and this would, in turn, is a source of why the applicant is, is eliminating two stories of the podium where the school was originally proposed to be located.
And, and do we have any more information about why S C A declined?
Not, not at this moment, but I'm happy to follow up.
Yeah, I think that's an important point, just because, not because I made it, but because sites for schools don't come around very often.
We think everything that you say is an important point, Commissioner.
I think I disagree with that even. I make many unimportant points, but, but there's not, it's not too many sites available for public schools. This is obviously a pretty special location, proximited parks, that the applicant has built and the quality of public space, and so I just would be curious to understand more why S C A thinks it doesn't need a school. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Reberschad?
Thank you for the presentation. Just a general question, and it touches on what the Chair mentioned. In terms of the apartment building's definition or code, what is the definition of a balcony? And the reason I bring that up is if they have openings along the balcony, how is that still considered a balcony? Because to my understanding, there's a, there's a platform that extends from the building, and it's a certain distance you're allowed, so I'm just trying to understand that, once again, the concept as you brought it up, because I want to know the thinking behind it. I just, if they can, can get that information, I would appreciate it. And has this concept been used on other buildings, or have the, I guess, the applicant, have they used this on other buildings?
This specific design choice?
Yeah.
Not to my knowledge. I, I will say that on Kent Avenue, they are managing, so they're pursuing an action with other agencies in order to facilitate the seven-foot balcony as it does project into, onto the sidewalk.
Okay. Get me that in.
Well, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner? Okay. All right. Other questions? All right, there are none. We, I thank you for this. That was a great job. We, we're certified on Domino's site D, and let's move on to the next item. Thank you.
The fourth item on our agenda is a certification of the city map amendment in Queens Community District Twelve, presenting for the first time to the Commissioner is Ted Wing Huang.
All right. Welcome. Good to have you here.
I will be presenting the application, New York City Transit Authority, Tuskegee Empanada City Map Change. The application was submitted by the New York City Transit Authority. Departure area is in the Jamaica neighborhood of Queens. It is within the Jamaica Industrial Business Zone, Community D six twelve, and in M one one zoning district. The applicant is proposing a change to the city map involving the eliminations, its continuance, and closing of a portion of Tuskegee Empanada and the immediate adjacent traffic island. If approved, it would facilitate bus circulation and provide support parking within the New Jamaica Bus Depot. Next, I will briefly provide background information on the Jamaica Bus Depot. The Jamaica Bus Depot, highlighted with orange dash line on the slide, was constructed in nineteen thirty nine and is one of the eight depots in Queens that provides storage and maintenance for the New York City Transit Authority, Queens Division Bus Fleet. The existing Jamaica Bus Depot has multiple functional deficiencies that make it inadequate for serving and maintaining the current bus fleet. The Jamaica Bus Depot reconstruction and expansion project has commenced, and it is anticipated to be completed by twenty twenty seven. Departure area, highlighted with orange solid line on the slide, is approximately thirteen thousand five hundred square feet. It includes a portion of Tuskegee Empanada and an existing New York City Department of Transportation Traffic Island. The portion of Tuskegee Empanada to be de-mapped, highlighted in yellow on the slide, extend between the fork in Tuskegee Empanada and Merit Boulevard, is approximately two hundred sixty feet long with. with parallel parking along the curb adjacent to the traffic island. The street roadbed is approximately twenty-three feet wide and provide access to the Jamaica Bus Depot. The south side of the street has approximately thirteen feet wide sidewalk with a single street trees, single street light pole, and a fire hydrant. The portion of Traffic Island to be demapped, highlighted in green on the slide, is approximately ten thousand four hundred square feet. It is paved with asphalt and gravel. Concrete sidewalks along the island's northern frontage on Liberty Avenue and eastern frontage on Merit Boulevard will remain and are not part of the demapping. There are no sidewalk along its western or southern frontage on Tuskegee Amman Way. The interior of the traffic island is used for parking by New York City Transit Authority employees and the public. Although there are no markings to define spaces nor signage for parking regulations. There is a water main run beneath the portion of Tuskegee Amman Way to be demapped, sanitary and storm sewage lines, as well as underground utility lines and conduits also traverse the project areas. The project area is located within the M11 zoning district and surrounded by R4, R5, and R6 zoning districts. Land use to the north and south of the project area is predominantly industrial and manufacturing, including the Jamaica Bus Depot located directly to the south. To the southeast and southwest, the pro- the area transitioned to lower-density residential uses consisting mainly one and two-family homes. Commercial, industrial, instructional, and parking facility usage are concentrated along Merit Boulevard and Liberty Avenue. Further north lies the Long Island, Lo- Long Island Warehouse and to the northwest is Cooney's New York College. Immediately west of the project area is a three-story self-storage warehouse. Further west is a large open parcel alone owned by Dormitory Authority of the State of New York and managed by York College and will serve as the temporary bus parking site during the reconstruction and expansion of the Jamaica Bus Depot. The street network surrounding the project area is defined by Merit Boulevard, Liberty Avenue, and Tuskegee Amman Way. To the east is Merit Boulevard, a hundred feet wide, two-way street running north to south. To the north is Liberty Avenue and eighty feet wide, two-way street running east to west. The western segment of Tuskegee Amman Way is seventy feet wide, one-way street running southbound. The southern segment of Tuskegee Amman Way extending from the fork in the row to the Merit Boulevard is also seventy feet wide and up the way as a one-way westbound street. This southern segment of Tuskegee Amman Way is proposed to be demapped. Public transportation access to and from the development site is provided by several local buses along Merit Boulevard and Liberty Avenue. Next, I will provide, I will present some site photo around the project areas. Photo one, looking north toward the project area from the intersection of Merit Boulevard and Tuskegee Amman Way. Here you can see the concrete sidewalk along Merit Boulevard and it will not be demapped. Photo two, looking south towards the project area from the intersection of Liberty Avenue and Merit Boulevard. Here you can see the interior of the traffic island is being used for parking. Photo three, looking south towards the project area from the intersection of Liberty Avenue and Tuskegee, Tuskegee Amman Way. Here you can see there's no sidewalk along the west side of the traffic island. Final photo, looking north toward the project area from the fork of Tuskegee Amman Way. Here you can see Tuskegee Amman Way split into two streets. The street to the right is to be demapped. Next, I will briefly touch on the new Jamaica Bus Depot and how the proposed demapping area intended to work with the new bus depot. The new Jamaica Bus Depot will consist of two buildings. A one-story depot buildings and a three-story administrative buildings. The main depot building will have rooftop parking and will be located along Merit Boulevard and extend from Tuskegee Amman Way to Hundred and Seventh Avenue. The three-story administrative building will be located at the southeast corner of Hundred Sixty-Fifth Street. When buses returning from scheduled service, they will enter Jamaica Bus Depot facility through an entering, entrance on Merit Boulevard just north of Hundred and Seventh Avenue. They will be queued in the gray outdoor parking area located west of the depot. At the northern end of the site, buses will make a U-turn within the area to be demapped before entering the Jamaica Bus Depot facility. The area is highlighted in blue on the slide. When filling and washing is completed, buses will be either parked on the roof or in the gray parking area. The proposed change in the city map, if approved, the project area would remain city-owned and be leased to the New York City Transit Authority under the master lease agreement with the City of New York. A perimeter fence would be installed around the project area and be leased to New York City Transit Authority. No new development or building construction is planned. Aside from repaving and potential drainage-related improvement, we do cite stormwater runoff within the project area. The existing sidewalk along the west sides of Merit Boulevard would be extended. And along east side of Tuskegee Amman Way, a new sidewalk will be provided. The two areas are highlighted by the green dash line on the slide. Street trees and landscaping will be provided in accordance with New York City Parks and, uh, New York City Department Parks and Recreation's requirements. The segment of Tuskegee Amman Way will be closed to the public and will be, uh, I'm sorry, and will eliminate up to eight curb-side parkings. The proposed change in the city map will alter street patterns in the areas. Westbound traffic on the portion of Tuskegee Amman Way proposed for demapping will be redirected as shown by the large yellow arrows on the slide. To access Tuskegee Amman Way, north or southbound traffic from Merit Boulevard will be directed to westbound of Liberty Avenue and then proceed to southbound Hundred Sixty-Fifth Street to reach Tuskegee Amman Way. In summary, New York City Transit Authority is proposing a change to the ci- city map involving the elimination, discontinuance, and closing of a portion of Tuskegee Amman Way and its immediate adjacent traffic island. This concludes the presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, okay, so it, it looks and seems to me that this, uh, space that we're talking about, the area to be demapped, by the way, congratulations, this is your first presentation, great job. Um, uh, on this area, it's used primarily for parking of MTA vehicles on that sort of raised island over there, is that correct?
That's correct. Mostly MTA employees, but also public, uh, they were able to, uh, access and park cars there.
So if the public can sneak in, they do?
Right.
Okay. Um, all right. And if you can go to slide 12 for me for one second? Um, so this is the proposed route upon completion of the new, uh, Jamaica Bus Depot. So you, the buses would enter at, on Merrick Boulevard, loop around inside the building. Um, wait, if they park, they park, but if they need to escape, they go out through that area. They make the turn using the area that's proposed to be eliminated, discontinued, and closed. And then it would come back out and, uh, escape back on Tuskegee Airman Way, is that correct?
Um, when they are queued on the northern end, they will use the demapping area and enter the bus depot facility.
Right. And when they need to leave, they go back out into the outdoor parking lot, hang that right turn and then make a left out onto Tuskegee Airman Way, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
So you can see the green arrows, that's where the bus can exit from the, uh, uh, bus depot.
Yep. Okay. And what is the experience today? What happens today for the existing facility? Where, do buses enter, uh, also from Merrick Boulevard?
Uh, yes. Let me go back to the previous slide showing the existing bus depot. So we contact, uh, the applicant and applicant contact, uh, MTA. My, our understanding is before the, uh, reconstructions, the buses will primarily enter from Hundred and Seventh Avenue or the Merit Boulevard. So that's directly, uh, the bus will directly move into the open area for parking and waiting for queue for the, to enter into the bus depot. Uh, when they're, the bus is up, they will enter through the existing, uh, bus depot, uh, through the tail end of the buildings. One, and then they will move into the, uh, depot and go through all the stages, uh, washing, refilling, or maintenance. Then they will exit into the Jama- I mean, the Tuskegee Amman Way.
That's the way, that's the way it works today?
Yes.
So you can enter in either Merrick Boulevard or Hundred Seventh Avenue, but you exit always on Tuskegee Airman Way, unless there's an emergency or something. That is the normal route, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So it's not entirely dissimilar. It's just that Hundred Seventh Avenue would no longer be an entrance point in a future, um, depot.
Correct.
Okay.
But Hundred and Seventh will be an emergency exit also.
I got you. Okay, great. Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. Congratulations. I also had questions about the cars that are parking. It's clear that there are a great number of cars that are parked all over both Tuskegee Airman Way, um, and around the parts of the facility that are not being actively utilized for bus traffic. Uh, and that, given that, that the elimination of eight legitimate spaces seems counterintuitive when there are so many cars that are already parking illegally. Why would we think, one, that that would stop? Do, is the fence going to be south of the area where all the cars are parked?
Uh, the pr- perimeter fence will be installed around the project area. That's where you see the, uh, orange solid line. So that will prevent public entrance and also prevent illegal parking to the project area.
Will the employees still be allowed to park in that area?
Um, this is something I need to confirm with the applicant to see if, are they allowed to park in the project area?
Because I know they have, generally, they have three shifts of workers. Um, and I suspect the workers do not want to leave their cars away from the facility.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm curious as to their explanation for why they're not going to recognize that their employees are driving in, particularly on the late-night shifts, and provide some type of parking on-site or somewhere.
Mm-hmm. I definitely will relay this question to the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
And provide you with the question, uh, the answer.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you very much. Congrats again, and this item is now certified. So congrats.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on.
The fifth item on our agenda is a City Council Modification Scope Determination for Western Rail Yard Modifications. The City Council proposes to modify the special permit and the modification to a previously approved restrictive declaration. And staff believe these modifications are within scope. Abby Ryder is here to present.
Hey Abby, hello.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm returning today for a scope determination for the City Council's modification to the Western Rail Yard application. As a quick reminder, this is a private application for four proposed land use actions. A zoning text amendment, a special permit, a city map amendment, a modification of a previously approved restrictive decla- and a modification of a previously approved restrictive declaration. Since the commission voted to approve this application on April 9th, the City Council Land Use Committee voted to recommend modifications to the special permit and restrictive declaration. And here we have a summary of the City Council's proposed changes. The first is the removal of the gaming facility scenario from the special permit and restrictive declaration. Only the alternative scenario, which doesn't include a possible gaming facility, would remain. The second proposed modification is changing Site B at the southeast corner of the development site, eliminating the waivers sought as part of the special permit, including ground floor use waivers for transparency, retail, and blank wall treatment requirements, bulk waivers for, um, base height setback, maximum tower dimensions, floor plate size, among other changes. Instead, the 2009 approved dimensions, bulk, and urban design regulations, um, eh, for Site 6 in a similar location would apply. I'll show the changes to the site plan on the next slide. The third proposed modification is a further reduction in the Site C podium to the north, including reducing the podium height on the tower, or on the portion, uh, of the podium west of the mid-block connection from 180 feet to 160 feet, reducing the podium depth on the portion west of the mid-block connection northward by 60 feet, and reducing the podium depth of the portion east of the mid-block connection northward by 25 feet. I'll show some of those changes on a site plan on the next slide. The fourth proposed modification is a change in the urban design controls for Site A at the southwest corner to reduce the maximum floor plate dimension in any direction from 250 feet to 235 feet. The fifth proposed modification is an increase in the required number of onsite income-restricted residential units from 324 units to either, uh, the greater of 420 residential rental units or 25% of the total residential units. The provision of the additional income-restricted units would be subject to the availability of Section 485-X tax abatements or similar program at the time of, of construction. The proposed modification also includes that the average AMI for these units would be 90%. The existing required maximum AMI of 125% would remain. And finally, there is a proposed modification to increase the amount of required continuous lawn area in the open space. This requirement is included in the public access area design requirements in the restrictive declaration, which would, uh, which are also proposed to be updated to reflect and facilitate the City Council modifications, uh, to the Sites A, B, and C. Here you can see two illustrative site plans. The image on the left shows the alternative scenario site plan as modified and approved by the commission. The image on the right shows City Council's proposed modifications to the site plan. Both images have red dashed outlines indicating roughly the areas where the city, uh, where City Council is proposed, proposing modifications to that site plan. Looking to the north at Site C, as I mentioned, you can see in the image on the right, the boundaries of Site C are proposed to be reduced along the southern side of the podium, again, outlined in the red dashed areas. As you'll recall, the commission modified, uh, Site C to include a mid-block connection and southeast open area, both open to the sky. City council proposes to reduce the portion west of the mid-block connection by 60 feet and reduce the portion east of the mid-block connection by 25 feet. The other notable change to the site plan, uh, that you can see is at Site B at the southeast corner of the development site. Again, the 2009 approved dimensions, bulk and urban design regulations for Site Six in the ZR would apply to the site. Uh, the requested bulk and use waivers, uh, for Site B and the special permit would no longer apply with the city council's proposed modifications. Here we just have a quick visual, there's a visualization of the changes to the site plan with respect to open space. In the left image, you can see the 2009 site plan, which is interrupted by building sites and private streets in the center of the development site. In the right image, you can see, uh, that the site plan for the special permit, including the city council's proposed modifications. The further reductions to the Site C podium footprint would facilitate additional open space, particularly a larger continuous lawn area between Site A and Site C. And here's a quick comparison of the dimensions for the commission's reference. You can see, uh, in the southeast corner that the city council's proposed modifications to Site B, uh, in the image on the right, match the dimensions of Site Six from the 2009 site plan on the left. The north-south dimensions are 180 feet, 180 feet minimum, 200 feet maximum, and the east-west dimensions are 390 feet, 95 feet maximum. Overall, DCP believes the city council's modi- proposed modifications, summarized on this slide, are in scope for both the land use application and the environmental review. A tech memo has been prepared for the EIS. This concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks Abby. Okay. Let me start with Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Uh, with regard to, uh, uh, modification number one, um, the gaming facilities, I understand the gaming facility, uh, application has been withdrawn. Right?
So as part of thi- this land use application, the private application, it's been removed from the special permit and from the restrictive declaration, references to those. The applicant had not yet submitted, um, a gaming facility application license to the state. That was, that will be due at the end of this month if they had submitted it.
So you're saying is there was nothing to withdraw?
Correct.
There was nothing to withdraw because they hadn't, they hadn't submitted their application yet because it wasn't due yet.
Just the possibility was removed as an option from this application that came before the commission. And again, the commission was never voting on whether to approve a gaming facility at this location.
There's another clump of dirt on it, right? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Do you, did you have other questions?
No.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Okay. Commissioner Mann.
Just a quick question on the, on the, uh, residential versus commercial program.
Sure.
Um, and just make sure I got the, the fifth number correct. So can you just help me understand sort of how the program overall has changed? Not just the affordable housing units?
Um, sure. So, uh, the applicant has, was originally proposing a potential, um, commercial, uh, building at Site B and is now proposing a potential residential building at Site B. Um, they, as you know, the, the zoning is quite flexible here, so it doesn't necessarily change the, uh, guaranteed number of units overall that will be built. But, um, you, they have, you know, there's a potential of up to, the city council noted at the time of their vote, uh, up to 4,000 residential units overall on the site.
Right. That's what I was, I think, trying to square a little bit is, is this modification with the, the public description of a significantly larger portion of residential potentially returning to the site? So you're just speaking to the zoning modifications, but that is still allowed within the zoning framework and so you're not speaking to that here?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other questions? Okay. Before we, uh, do our, um, scope determination, I just want to thank you, Abby, and the team. Um, it's obviously been a, a, a lot of work, uh, to bring this to the state and it's been a busy couple of weeks of news for this project. Um, and I'm glad to see that the council agreed with and adopted this commission's modifications to improve the site layout. Um, the revised layout with the added separation of the formerly block-long building to one with a large open-to-the-sky pedestrian connection, uh, improves the overall project design by a lot and will deliver a better experience for the community by adding nearly 30,000 new square feet of publicly accessible space. I feel certain that these changes will complement the 5.6 acre public open space across the super block spanning from 11th to 12th avenues. And I'm excited to, uh, see the future of this site. Um, and so thank you for all of the work that you put into this. Um, so with that, scope determination here. I'm going to seek assent by a voice vote to send a scope determination letter to the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay. It is done.
Great.
Thank you, Abby.
The sixth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for 166 Kings Highway rezoning. The city council proposes to modify the zoning text amendment to Appendix F, removing MIH Option 2, as well as the modification to the zoning map amendment. And staff believe these modifications are within scope. David Weisglas is here to present.
All right, David. Hello. Good afternoon. There we go. Uh, good afternoon, Jerick Aronik and Commissioners. This is a scope determination for a city council modification for the 166 Kings Highway rezoning. Uh, the 166 Kings Highway rezoning is a private application from 166 Plaza LLC for a zoning map amendment from an R6B C23 district to an R7X C24 district and a zoning text amendment to Appendix F located in Bensonhurst Community District 11 in Brooklyn. The city council has proposed a modification to the proposed zoning district of the area, reduce the area to be rezoned, and strikes MIH Option 2 from the proposed text amendment. On the left here, you can see the CPC approved zoning map amendment, which changed the existing R6B C23 district covering the project area to an R7X C24 district, uh, which included, uh, included two roughly triangular blocks, as you can see there. Uh, on the right is the city council modification before us today. Uh, the rezoning area has been reduced, removing the eastern block from the rezoning area. And that area now removed will remain R6B C23. The remaining western block is supposed to be reduced from an R7X C24 district, as originally approved, to an R7A C24 district. Zooming in on the project area, I, I did want to show two images of the eastern block, which is being proposed to be removed from the rezoning area. Uh, this is a non-applicant-owned site currently improved to the one-story retail building originally constructed in 1931 and will now remain R6B C23. And you could see it, uh, kind of underlined on those images in the pink line. This is a table with some of the regulations of the modified zoning districts. The modified districts will result, uh, will result in reductions to the maximum heights and the residential and community facility FARs. Uh, I'd also like to take this point to note out that we've done some calculations on the changes to allowable FARs and found that, uh, taking into account similar unit sizes and non-residential space, this modification would, uh, likely result in a development with 79 apartments, 24 of which would be income restricted per MIH. That represents a loss of 18 apartments, uh, six of which would be income restricted, um, from the original proposal that was before you. This is the CPC approved, approved MIH map, which covered both city blocks and mapped Options 1 and 2. And this here is the city council modified MIH map, which reduced the MIH area to, uh, eliminate the eastern block and removed MIH Option 2. Uh, both city council modifications to the zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment are within scope of the environmental review. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Great. Thank you. So initially, as proposed, uh, it was 97 units of housing? Yes, correct. Uh, the original proposal, uh, contemplated 97 units of housing, 30 of which would be affordable per MIH. Uh, obviously, we're taking assumptions into account, but given average unit sizes, sizes and other things, our calculations found that more than likely this would result in 79 units as opposed to 90 and, uh, That's what the 97. Uh, yes, correct. Correct. My apologies. So this would result in 79 units as compared to the original 97 and 24 income restricted units, uh, compared to the original 30 affordable units. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Shurula?
Just a quick question. And I'm trying to recall the, the application itself, but the, the triangular piece on the corner that was, that the council took out, which was originally in the applicant's proposal, which was not applicant-owned. Do we know what the council's rationale was? And I'm not challenging it, but was it the non-applicant making an issue or the fact that their property was incorporated into the rezoning area? Or was it that the council was concerned about the increase in zoning on that lot? I can't recall if there was actually a proposal for that lot or it was just incorporated into the zoning area.
Yeah. Great question. Uh, I don't want to contemplate too much about, you know, the city council.
Yeah. I just wondered if it was set out loud or what we thought resulted in this particular piece of the modification.
Understood. Yeah. Under this proposal, it gets a little bit of a gray area because for environmental review and things like that, we do take into account what's, you know, likely to occur, right?
Sure.
On a non-applicant-owned lot. But that's just likely, right? Those are just our assumptions. So under the original proposal, there was no actual development contemplated for that non-applicant.
Yeah.
Um, at least one that was before us that we were aware of. No. Um, so I, I can't speak to necessarily whether the owner of that lot, you know, came forward and had an issue, but, um, my understanding is that the city council operated based on what the zoning would actually be.
Whatever. Okay. Yeah. I just wondered if during the here public hearing that any of that came up? Because I don't recall it coming up here.
No.
So, okay.
I, I don't believe so, but, uh, you know, I don't want to speak too much for the city council.
Yeah. No, no, no. I, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay. Scope determination time. I'd like to seek, uh, an assent by a voice vote. Send that scope determination letter to the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. We are done. That is approved. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
The seventh item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for 7399 Empire Boulevard rezoning. The city council proposes to modify the zoning text amendment to Appendix F, removing MIH Options 1 and 2, adding Option 3. And staff believe this modification is within scope.
Okay. This one we've, we've seen before. Um, I'm going to seek assent by a voice vote here to send a scope determination letter to the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. Motion carries. That is approved.
Other follow-ups. Uh, first, we have 4211 30th Avenue rezoning, which had a public hearing at the May 19th public meeting. Uh, Derek is on Zoom to present, noting Commissioner Ron Prashad has recused on this one. And a correction, May 21st public meeting.
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioner. The Department of City Planning, the Department of City Planning finds the applicant's request for a zoning map amendment from an RR5 C12 zoning district to R6A C24 and RR5 zoning districts, as well as a zoning text amendment to map MIH Options 1 and 2 as appropriate. These actions would provide 32 new dwelling units, eight of which would be permanently income restricted as part of the enlargement of an existing single-story grocery store fronting a wide street and within close proximity to transit. And C24 overlay would allow greater flexibility for commercial uses on the ground floor, reinforcing the local commercial nature of 30th Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have, uh, 347 Flushing Avenue, which also had a hearing on May 21st. Jordan is here to present.
Hi, Jordan. Hi. All right. Uh, good afternoon. Uh, today, I'll wait for it to come up. Great. This is a private application for a zoning map amendment from M12 to M15 and R71 C24 and a zoning text amendment to map an MIH area. The project area is located at 347 Flushing Avenue in Williamsburg Community District 1, Brooklyn. Uh, the application is certified on February 3rd. DCP staff recommends approval of this application. The zoning map amendment from M12 to M15 is appropriate to increase the maximum FAR for industrial and commercial uses from 2 to 5 and eliminate parking requirements, allowing greater flexibility at the site aligned with surrounding uses. The replacement of ground floor parking with commercial uses will provide key goods and services to the residents of this neighborhood, which will help support the neighborhood's growth, complementing nearby M Districts and the area's wide diversity of land uses, including residential, commercial, educational, and civic. Thank you. Happy to take questions.
Great. Thank you very much.
On 236 Gold Street rezoning, uh, which also had a hearing on May 21st, there were public comments and testimonies provided in your week of materials. At the June 16th review session, Griffin will present.
Great.
Okay. Uh, next is 47 Hall Street rezoning, which had a public hearing at the May 7th public meeting. Emertha is here to present.
Hello there. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The department believes that the zoning map amendment to change an M12 zoning district to an M16A R8 district and M15 district, uh, and the zoning text amendment to establish the special mixed-use, uh, district and to create an MIH area are appropriate. Together, these actions would facilitate an 816,000 square foot mixed-use development, including approximately 285,000 square feet of non-residential space with 611 dwelling units and 140 to 150 permanently income restricted units. The existing M12 light manufacturing district with low permitted densities and sky exposure plane requirements is not reflective of the existing character of the project block and vicinity, which consists of high lot coverage, large floor, uh, floor plate loft-style structures that are overbuilt and predate the 1961 zoning. The proposed zoning districts would support the adaptive reuse of existing structures and bring them into greater compliance, while also introducing a broader variety of uses, including mixed-income housing, neighborhood services, and job space. The department notes that the densities and heights allowed under the proposed zoning districts are similar to the heights and densities which exist and are planned in the surrounding area. And that include newer, uh, that includes newer buildings in the Navy Yard proposed to reach heights of nearly 400 feet. The department also believes the elimination of off-street parking requirements and reduced loading requirements facilitated by the proposed districts is appropriate. The department notes that the development site's location proximate to the city subsidized Brooklyn Navy Yard campus, uh, which has plans for phased new development to accommodate approximately 4.6 million square feet of new industrial space and recognizes that the envisioned uses at the yard are complementary to those permitted under the proposed M16A and M15 districts. The department also recognizes the citywide commercial vacancy trends and difficulties associated with leasing non-residential spaces and recommends that the applicant develop a robust tenanting strategy, particularly for the M-only mid-block versions of the site, um, that responds to both local and citywide trends and can support and build off of the ongoing growth in the Navy Yard. The applicant is encouraged, uh, to also consider the inclusion of compatible light industrial uses, art spaces, and small-scale production uses. The department notes its concerns regarding the nearly 160,000 square foot proposed self-storage facility, which is a low-job generating use. The department encourages the applicant to pursue an alternative building program consisting of more job-intensive uses and/or housing, with careful consideration given to the building's location along the BQE frontage. The department requests the applicant to be responsive to community feedback related to the site and surroundings to enhance streetscape and the pedestrian experience, flow of vehicles, and access to local transit infrastructure. Uh, the site has access to multiple modes of transit, open spaces, and, and increasing residential pop- uh, population along the upland and waterfront blocks. Uh, the department believes that the existing land use patterns in the Walabout neighborhood are conducive to fostering a walk-to-work mixed-use community and recommends approval of this application. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I have a question or comment for you, really, probably a comment at this point. Commissioner, sorry.
Thank you so much, Jer. Thank you so much for that. Um, and, uh, excited to hear that the department is recommending, um, to address the issue with the storage, the self-storage facility. But I'm wondering if, was there a response from the applicant after the hearing on this?
Yes. They submitted some written responses, uh, about the self-storage component. They did note that in the near term, they see it as a viable way to move forward with the proposal. But in the long run, they are open to reconsidering that use. But they believe it is something that they need financially at this time.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Emrita.
Next, on Bally's Ferry Point map amendment, which had a public hearing on April twenty-third, Stephen will present at the June sixteenth review session, but here if any questions.
Great. Thank you, Stephen. Hold on, we have a question from Commissioner Murray.
I just want to make a comment. Stephen, thank you for those renderings. I think, you know, we hadn't seen those, and the amount that's seen above the trees is so miniscule. And that's the point that I was trying to make. I wanted to emphasize to the community that this is not as obstrusive as they think that it is, and where it sits is perfectly fine in terms of what I feel like the borough president feels the same way. There's community residents that feel the same way. This is not a building that is in the community where the height, concern of height, would be sort of a major concern for the homes where the shadows would be cast. So thank you for those renderings.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Stephen.
On Lenox Hill Hospital, there were public comments and testimonies in your weekend materials, as well as a follow-up memo. Oscar will present at the June sixteenth review session. Lastly, for post-hearing follow-ups, we have the Midtown South Mixed-Use Plan, which had a public hearing on May seventh. There was a memo in your materials, as well as public comments and testimonies. Andy is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hi, Andy.
This is the second post-hearing follow-up for Midtown South. At the first hearing follow-up, we addressed comments from stakeholders in the community that we heard during public engagement. Today, we're going to focus on responding to questions and concerns we heard from you all at pre-hearing. First, we're going to address comments and concerns we heard regarding the balance between residential and non-residential uses. Then we're going to answer questions related to F A R bonuses and stacking and other incentives. And then we're going to finish with seeker impacts and mitigation. So we heard from you and members of the public that there's really a desire to see Midtown South transform into a truly mixed-use neighborhood with a healthy balance of residential and non-residential uses. But there was some concern about the introduction of housing leading to the potential of this neighborhood becoming predominantly residential. Of course, allowing housing here, especially with M I H units, permanently affordable housing through that program is really, you know, one of the central pillars of the M S M X neighborhood plan. But we think that mixed use is the most likely outcome here for a variety of reasons. The first is that Midtown as a whole is still an extremely attractive non-residential market. We see office projects popping up all the time, including five fifteen Seventh Avenue, this project here on the screen, which is in public review at the moment and will return to you very soon. And five fifteen Seventh Avenue is actually in the M S M X rezoning area. We think the story of the financial district is really instructive to illustrate what can happen when increasing residential opportunities for new residential development in predominantly non-residential areas can occur. So in the early two thousands, as I'm sure you all know, when office vacancy rates were similar to what they are now in the M S M X plan area and property tax revenues in particular were really in freefall. The introduction of some generous tax benefits, coupled with liberalized bulk regulations for commercial residential conversions, spurred a ton of new residential development down here in the financial district. And over the subsequent decades, despite F I D I adding thousands of new residential units, the neighborhood remained solidly commercial. No one would say that F I D I is at risk of becoming a bedroom community. So the successful evolution of the financial district into a more mixed-use community has improved conditions, we think, for both workers and residents alike, bringing a lot of activity to the streets after work and on weekends, introducing neighborhood services like grocery stores and retail, while still retaining the predominantly resident, commercial character that it's known for. We also heard some concerns about the potential loss of Class B and Class C office space and how that would impact businesses, particularly startups, nonprofits, et cetera, who really depend on that type of space. Unlike the housing market, where we know there's an acute crisis, the commercial real estate market and the Class B and C submarket in particular is saturated. The availability rate in Manhattan is over twenty-three percent. The M S M X E I S projects that about seven hundred thousand square feet of Class B and C office space might be taken off the market, which represents barely one percent of the borough's Class B and C supply. So we believe that there's more than enough slack in the market for Class B and C office users to find suitable space at comparable prices. We mentioned that certification and in subsequent conversations, the look-back analysis we conducted on similarly situated districts, C six-four M in the Garment District, just west of the Northwest Quadrant, the M one-six D in the Southwest Quadrant, and the C six-four A District to the south of the plan area. We think it makes sense to spend a little bit of time taking a closer look at what lessons can be gleaned from this research and how it informs our approach to M S M X. So for context, each of these areas were rezoned from manufacturing districts to districts that allow housing within the past twenty years. We wanted to see how the unlocking of housing affected the balance of the uses in each of those areas. So here's a chart comparing the total floor area for each broad use category before and after the rezoning for each geography. What we see is non-hotel commercial floor area essentially flat with strong residential growth. So basically, all of the net growth that we see is in residential. And what we saw from our research is that developers were really taking advantage of that low-hanging fruit, the softest of soft sites, parking lots, parking garages, one-story taxpayers, et cetera. Here's a summary table looking at changes to floor area by use. Those are the top rows you see, along with dwelling units, the change, that's the middle row. At the middle of the screen, we see an increase over three hundred percent of dwelling units. And employment is the bottom third of your screen by macro sector. So not only do we see no evidence of residential displacing commercial, we actually see really strong job growth in most macro sectors alongside really strong housing growth. So as Commissioner Mann noted at a past review session, these are not perfect analogies. The C six-four A District is largely coextensive with Historic District. The M one-six D prohibits new residential development on lots with more than forty thousand square feet of existing non-residential floor area. But in the C six-four M, in the Garment Center, residential development has been largely unrestricted since two thousand and five. And we haven't really seen any sort of trend of older loft buildings being torn down to make way for residential. And I think overall, the high-level takeaway is still valid. We haven't seen evidence of job-generating uses having suffered as a result of allowing housing. But let's zoom out a little bit further, take a look at the C District surrounding M S M X, which has permitted housing since before zoning was put in place. You notice the sea of red in the map on the right that allow both commercial and residential uses. So despite permitting housing, Midtown and areas around M S M X remain overwhelmingly commercial. We've looked at this map of existing housing units before. But here, we really wanted to highlight just the C District, so we made those pop a little bit. Obviously, the C Districts allow both commercial and residential. You can clearly see the lots where there's a noticeable absence of housing in Midtown, particularly to the north of the plan area and in between the four quadrants. And these are in areas where M I H does not apply and where you can build all-market-rate housing. So even as you transition into more mixed areas around the Southern Quadrant, districts that have permitted residential uses for decades still have a healthy mix of housing and non-residential uses. And areas where you see greater uniformity of residence, excuse me, residential character are within those purely residential zoning districts. So we definitely believe that Midtown South is a great place for new housing in centrally-located areas, amazing access to transit and jobs. These are exactly where we should encourage new housing, new high-density housing. At the same time, Midtown South is also an appropriate place for office, hotel, light manufacturing, wholesale, and retail. And continuing to allow those uses is also the right move here. In a similar vein, we also heard concerns that increasing residential densities beyond twelve F A R may create a significant incentive to tear down older loft buildings. This is an understandable fear, but past experience has shown that if and when it does materialize, change is often gradual. And while some redevelopment is to be expected, the calculus for what happens on any given lot is really highly nuanced. So for one, redevelopment is really challenging. Not only is demolition itself very expensive, but it also takes a long time, time in which cash flow from rents is being foregone and other costs like taxes and insurance still have to be carried. There's also a growing body of research on this topic showing that redevelopment is generally only profitable when a new building is significantly larger than an old building it replaces. As we previously discussed, a lot of existing buildings across the plan area are built in very high densities, in many cases overbuilt under both existing and proposed zoning. So an ongoing study out of M I T found that on sites that were redeveloped over the last twenty years in New York City, new buildings are on average three point four times larger than the buildings they replaced. Applying this to M S M X, you could draw the conclusion that once an existing building gets above a certain F A R, a host of factors from construction costs to affordable housing requirements, to the loss of rents, come into play and make the retention of the existing building, whether for residential conversion or as a non-residential use, a viable option. We also wanted to respond to questions about floor area bonuses. So if you recall, M S M X doesn't change the existing P O Ps bonus. It expands the applicability of the Transit Improvement Bonus and introduces the Covered Pedestrian Space Bonus, the C P S bonus. So while density bonus mechanisms, like the Transit Bonus or P O Ps Bonus, can be used in combination, the maximum bonus floor area above the base F A R that can be achieved is twenty percent for any and all bonuses obtained. We also want to clarify that the mechanism that allows the transfer of development rights from landmark properties is not a bonus because there's no net change in F A R. And because of that, it's not subject to the same twenty percent cap as a bonus. However, the amount of floor area that can be transferred is limited to twenty or thirty percent depending on the underlying zoning district. But that is a separate limit compared to the actual F A R bonus incentives. So they're two separate, separate mechanisms that can be used independently. So we heard loud and clear your questions about the desire for publicly accessible bathrooms within P O Ps. We acknowledge that the lack of restrooms is definitely throughout the city a real quality-of-life concern. It's one that the city is very focused on. And as we've described within zoning, restrooms are not a required amenity for P O Ps today. The M S M X proposal as well has not proposed any changes to the P O Ps regulations, and it would not be within scope to introduce a new requirement. However, because of the discretionary nature of the C P S bonus and because the first finding of the special permit requires that, quote, "The proposed covered pedestrian space will have a useful role in meeting existing needs for sheltered space for the comfort and convenience of the public." There is latitude for staff and the commission to request applicants include restrooms. And finally, on the topic of seeker. So for open space analysis, a significant adverse impact was identified since the open space ratio, which is already below the recommended threshold, would decrease by about eight percent with the introduction of about sixteen thousand new residents over the next ten years. Potential mitigation measures include expanding existing parks, creating new open space, establishing new pedestrian plazas and streets, and/or improving existing parks to allow for more diverse programming. A few things to note, unlike a lot of neighborhood plans, we don't have much of any publicly-owned land here to leverage to create new open space. So because of this, it's really critical that we keep all available options to create new public space like the P O Ps bonus on the table. Also important to note that seeker is very conservative for analysis purposes. So generally, a project needs to be both funded and under construction with a clear completion date within the analysis period for it to be counted in the open space analysis. So certain investments, like parts of Broadway Vision, can't be considered. And although we don't have a definitive list yet, public realm and open space improvements are a top priority as far as capital investments, which is being actively worked out as part of the non-zoning package that will complement the ultimate zoning proposal. On shadows, the E I S identified significant adverse impacts to five sunlight-sensitive resources, one P O Ps, and four historic resources. Mitigation measures for the P O Ps, which would receive a reduced amount of direct sunlight during the growing season, include things like replanning with shade-tolerant species. The adverse impact to the four historic resources, which are churches with some stained glass and other sunlight-sensitive features, those will remain unmitigated. I know there are some concerns with respect to the socioeconomic chapter and the potential for direct displacement of both residents and businesses. But to be clear, the E I S did not identify the potential for significant adverse impacts to socioeconomic conditions. So nothing is required to be mitigated. That being said, the potential for displacement of firms in key sectors, however small, is top of mind for a lot of stakeholders, us and elected officials, just given the legacy of manufacturing in this area. And I would say it's right up there with open space in terms of action items we're exploring with our agency partners and City Hall to find ways, either programmatic strategies or capital investments, to address those needs. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions for you. By the way, I think that's a very, very helpful review of where we are and the context and is very responsive to some of the things that we heard at the hearing. Let me start with Commissioner Benjamin, go to Commissioner Shurillo.
Thank you for the presentation. I still have some concerns. I know that they are not viewed as a significant portion of the New York City business economy, but about the Garment Center. And we heard several people who spoke at our hearing who were in significant parts, particularly the costume end of the business and the need for them to be able to access the Theater District and to access those small businesses or large businesses that supply them with those items they might need to be able to make those costumes overnight sometimes, if necessary. We had, you know, fifty, sixty years ago, we thought the Garment Center was an important industry within New York City. And as a result, we had the Garment Center Special District, which included protections for the industry and related parts. included protections for the industry and related parts. As time has gone on, it is clear the industry has both gotten smaller. We came up with a variety of proposals. One proposal was to move the garment industry to Queens. In the last iteration, in discussions with the industry, the unions, et cetera, there was the thought and proposal that the city would, and G I D C, would buy a building that would enable the industry to stay there and be able to know that they had a future. Whatever happened, you may not be able to answer that now, but whatever happened to that, and what are we doing now to make sure that the remaining parts of the garment industry that are important to other industries are helped during this period? When landlords, it was quite clear in other iterations of these proposals, and, you know, Mayor Bloomberg had a Garment Center District Task Force, that the owners who were being forced to reserve space in their own buildings for use only by Garment Center uses were in decline, and they were angry, rightfully so. But what are we doing now that we've turned that chapter page for the industry?
Right. Thank you for your question. So back in 2018, E D C committed $20 million for the purchase of the building, like you mentioned. My understanding is that they released an RFP. They did not receive the quality or many submissions that they were expecting. They extended the RFP, I think, a couple of times, and again, did not receive the quality or the number of submissions that would allow them to move forward with the purchase of a building. And so that element of the promises from 2018 was taken off the table and is now out of the budget. So that's no longer something that we expect to be part of this plan. What we can say about, you know, the potential for investments in making sure that, you know, the Garment District and certain firms are provided with the resources that, you know, many in the community think that they deserve, that's something that we're continuing to discuss with City Hall and other stakeholders to see if there's, you know, elements outside of zoning that can help support those firms.
And will we, I understand the continued discussion, but in having to vote for it before those discussions may come to fruition, I have a concern, a deep concern about that and have spoken with a couple of professors at F I T who are similarly concerned about how the fashion industry will operate and whether the city, I mean, their point of view is the city just doesn't care about the industry anymore and that there are no discussions and they're not, the city having removed the money to buy the building is now unconcerned about the industry.
Thanks for the clarification, Commissioner. I would also, I would note that, as Andy indicated, we are continuing conversations with E D C. That's sort of how we learned about the status of the commitments from the 2018 rezoning. And we're, in addition to that, we've been talking to a lot of the garment businesses located within the MSMX plan area, and they have participated in a lot of the engagement we've had, and we've continued to meet with them. In terms of, you know, what we can, we can discuss or guarantee here is conversations about non-zoning tools that are taking place with City Hall as well as E D C and any other relevant agencies. And what, the reason why we've sort of landed on this emphasis of non-zoning tools and programs outside of zoning is because we've seen that even with protective zoning that was in place pre-2018, the garment industry continued to shrink in this area. And zoning tools are sort of a blunt force when it comes to, you know, requiring specific uses in buildings and things like that, and we've seen that that doesn't necessarily work.
And that is why in 2018, the solution was to put in money in the budget, which the council did, to make sure that there was a location where they could be assured that the business would continue. And that certainly wasn't a zoning response.
Right.
That was a budgetary response.
Right. And that's why, that's sort of what I'm getting at with the non-zoning tools and the conversations we're continuing to have with E D C. While that particular $20 million was reallocated because there weren't any viable RFP submissions for a building acquisition itself, we are talking about, you know, what are other paths forward in terms of support and programming that we could explore?
And do we have any idea what, the nature of those discussions? What are you discussing?
So currently, we're talking to E D C about, E D C has actually quite a lot of existing programming that, that isn't necessarily specific to the fashion industry, but they have used that programming to support the fashion industry. And so we're talking about those types of programs and thinking through what are the needs for the garment businesses in this area today, and how can, how can we create new or evolve existing programming? But I don't, I don't have more details for you yet. These conversations are really ongoing and fairly active.
Do you think that E D C might be willing to give us some additional information or comfort that these discussions will actually result in a program that would benefit, an understandable, comprehensive, complete program that would benefit the Garment Center?
We can take that back and, and see what we can respond with.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, Commissioner Cerulo.
So I'll try to be quick. There were three different components, just wondering. Obviously, we all know what this is attempting to accomplish. And I found it interesting that in discussing the concerns that we've heard and how we minimize them to some degree, or at least explain why we do not believe them to be as much of concern as those who may have expressed concern think they will be. We're using real data that shows that in the past, the changes that have been made to incentivize some of the balance in the neighborhood, as this does, didn't really turn out to work the way it was intended to work at the time the changes took place. How do we make sure we're getting this right and that we're not going through a process where it ends up where the minimizing that we're proving from the data of the past doesn't end up being the data of the future where we did all this? What are we, how is the city going to ensure that these changes matter so that the neighborhood character becomes balanced better as it's intended? Some residential, new business, and that balance that everyone is hoping to achieve here.
Right. So let me try and restate that so I think I understand what you're trying to say. Are you saying that the three rezonings that we looked at didn't, didn't achieve what we set out to?
Well, I'm saying we achieved in some part some of the things that were intended, but we used the data to say, don't panic, not a lot happened. I mean, that's how I interpreted this. The spin in my head was people were afraid the balance would shift, and we showing people, don't worry about it, it doesn't, it doesn't happen. Now, I'm not saying that because I don't want to see a shift in it completely either. I just feel like at least my interpretation of the data as it was presented could be used to say it might not matter that much. And I'm just saying, how do we ensure that it matters?
Right. Yeah, and I apologize if that's how.
No, it could be how I'm hearing it.
The data was characterized, but I think what we can see from the data and the evidence is sort of a both and story. So we think that, on the one hand, it was successful, they were successful in many ways in achieving the goals of those rezonings and introducing a lot of new primarily residential development, though the net increase in floor area that we saw was almost all attributed to new residential development with the exception of, you know, some hotel development. But at the same time, what we didn't see is sort of like a sea change in the characters of these neighborhoods. We still saw, you know, that solidly commercial character remain. All of those jobs were still there 20 years, 10 years after the rezonings. So I think it's, it's sort of a both and narrative.
Okay, I understand that. That's helpful. I just want to make sure we're, we really believe that the changes we want to see occur, we're really providing for. That's, that's that.
Right. And I think the story is one of, you know, moving towards a greater mix of uses and balance, not one way or the other. And I think that's, you know, what we've seen at least, you know, this far in the process.
Thank you. On B and Cs, hopefully quick. We, you mentioned that obviously you believe that the population of B and Cs that exist are enough to accommodate the need for B and Cs. And is that assessment, does it take into account the fact that some of the Bs and Cs will be exercising, likely to be part of the population that we see conversions occurring in?
It does. So our E I S projects that around 700,000 square feet of commercial space will be lost as a result of the rezoning. But I think like I, like I mentioned in our talking points, that 700,000 represents barely 1% of the entire inventory of Class B and C office space across the borough. And if you look at New York City as a whole, obviously, an even smaller percentage than that. So just given how high office vacancy rates are in the area, it's a 23% availability rate for B and C across Manhattan, and I think in certain areas of MSMX, those availability rates are even higher. So these landlords and property owners are really struggling to fill those spaces, and even if, you know, a small percentage were taken off the market, we think there's a lot of slack to be able.
Terrific. All right, thank you, thank you for that clarification. Lastly, bathrooms. I heard you say that there's flexibility, I think is the term, in some discretionary way to require bathrooms in POPS, but I didn't hear whether we were actually going to do that or not. So what, what happens, how, what do we do with the discretionary ability versus will we see that in a, in a modification to the application? Or was that, I understood the outline, I just didn't know where we were going to go with it?
Right. So I think, you know, there's, just reading the zoning text, there's no requirement for restrooms, obviously, but we think particularly where there can be demonstration of a compelling public need for the comfort and convenience of the public, that there's definitely latitude for both staff and the commission to request amenities above and beyond sort of the baseline requirements. So as you know, whenever we get an application for either a POPS or a CPS bonus, there's a really robust staff review process, and much of the time, we are anticipating what questions and concerns you all will have so that we can provide that feedback to the applicant. And so now that staff understands sort of the priorities of the commission, we're able to better advocate for things like restrooms when we see those applications come in the door.
I, I got it. I guess, so, I guess the question was, so we're, we're not, I'm making a statement that's factual, but it might not be accurate. We're not going to do anything to this proposal that requires bathrooms to be put into POPS, but on a case-by-case basis, when an application comes to us and a POPS is involved in that application, we know we have the right in a discretionary way to perhaps ask for that to be included in the project?
That's correct. So for the MSMX proposal, it is out of scope to add in language to require bathrooms, but on a case-by-case basis, when the commission is reviewing a covered pedestrian space POPS, there's, there's flexibility noted in the zoning text that would allow the commission to request a bathroom.
Got it.
Because the text doesn't explicitly require a bathroom.
Understood. I appreciate it, got it. Thank you. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, ma'am.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of points. I think this is, for me anyway, a philosophical disagreement around the residential versus commercial strategy here, because if we all agree we want to preserve a mixed-use character, then there shouldn't be a reason why we wouldn't want to put in place some protections to ensure that. And, you know, I think the argument the department is making is, well, it's not going to happen, so don't worry about it, which to me feels, having been around planning enough decades, you know, the economy changes, you know, nobody foresaw the housing crisis 20 years ago that we're in today, they would have done things differently then. And so change is a good part of New York, and we should be expecting it and embracing it, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't put in place some guardrails to ensure it doesn't go in a direction we don't want. And so I think for me, the thing I struggle with is that, I really think Midtown should be a significantly commercial area for lots of reasons, which we can go into. And so I, I struggle with the department not being willing to put in place safeguards either for very large buildings to keep them as commercial, or for buildings on certain sites that we think are most important, or any other land use rationale we can come up with. But that's, I think, a philosophical disagreement I have. I would love to be a great and strong cheerleader for housing everywhere, but I do think that we need to take a little more care around not being surprised by the direction of the economy and putting in place some safeguards. Because I think the history of planning, any city shows that's the case, downtown Brooklyn, Long Island City, lower Manhattan, too, in terms of the shift that we're seeing. So I have a little more humility around my ability to predict where things will go and wanting to put in place some safeguards. So that's just a philosophical disagreement. And I really would wish the department would think about some protection, some limited protection for Class B and C office space here, again, whether it's on a building size or whether it's in the P1 area of the Garment District, which historically has been purely commercial, you know, maybe we can make that a, just a commercial district without necessarily the garment protections. But I don't, I don't get the sense based on the presentations I'm seeing and the discussion, I think we've gotten so focused on housing, which I appreciate as a goal, I just think in Midtown, we need to be a little more careful. So I don't, I don't want to belabor that because I don't, I don't know that there's that much to be achieved with that, but I am a little frankly disappointed that we can't find a way to be a little more careful around protecting commercial space in Midtown. The places maybe where I can focus more productively around the bulk controls, this came up at the public hearing, I thought there's actually some really good commentary around the setbacks at the ground level not being a smart urban I thought there's actually some really good commentary around the setbacks at the ground level not being a smart urban design strategy. There's an eight foot setback that's allowed at the, and, and if you look through the, the department's project description, it reinforces the street wall character, street wall character, street wall character. I do think that the eight foot setback at the ground floor just creates pockets of spaces in Midtown that are trash collects there, um, and, uh, people smoke cigarettes there and they tend to kind of break up the urban fabric and they're not good for retail. So I, I think it's worth the department rethinking that. I also personally don't think the covered pedestrian space is the right strategy from a public space standpoint here. You know, you, you show the great Sony POPS, but I think that most of them are pretty mediocre to poor. I would much prefer that bonus be used for housing or transit than mediocre public spaces, frankly. Um, so I would rethink the government pedestrian space question, um, a bit more carefully. Um, and then I, I, you know, again, I'm just going to beat the drum here a little bit. There is some great public space that's city owned. It's Herald and Greeley Square. And so I'm disappointed again that we haven't, center of this rezoning, we're adding a lot of people. We want to revitalize the economy. We're not using the lever that we have, which is improving the public space, revitalize the economy. And if we made public space investments here, I guarantee you the class B and C office vacancy rate would go down because people would want to be here. And so I just, I think that, that the city as a whole needs to use that lever to help drive economic activity. So again, I'm a little bit frustrated frankly that we can't be a little bit bolder on public space and relying on the private sector to deliver essential public good. Um, so that's, that's on the, the, the office, the, the bulk controls. I think the eight foot at the street level doesn't make sense. I don't think the covered pedestrian space really makes sense. Um, and I think that, you know, um, that there's a, you know, minor comment about the theater district. I don't, I didn't see that here, maybe that was in the prior post hearing follow up. I don't see why we would be, you know, tampering with the theater district. Uh, I know it's only a half a block, it's not a big deal, but I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't want to keep those incentives. As far as I can tell, Broadway theaters are still an important policy goal. Um, and again, I, you know, I, I want to be a huge advocate for all of this kind of work, but I do think it requires a little bit of give and take here around these basic questions that to me are not frivolous or kind of a distraction. They're about making this better. And so, um, I'd, I'd love to, you know, see some ability to accommodate, you know, I think constructive feedback to continue to make these proposals stronger.
Thank you. Do you mind if I respond?
Sure.
Um, so those points are all well taken. Um, I think when it comes to, you know, certain protections for non-residential uses, um, I think you might be referring to like a non-residential floor area preservation requirement, um, you know, which is something that we saw in the Garment District previously, um, other areas of the city. I think in practice, um, in a lot of those areas, that's something that.
Can I just, can I just interrupt that?
Sure.
That wasn't really what I was thinking of. It's more a, um, there's the, you know, even Atlantic Avenue, the department agreed that some amount of non-residential floor area was appropriate and did an ATEX or is committed to do an ATEX to allow for that. So there's, you know, in this case, what we're doing is we're setting a residential FAR that's higher than commercial. Right? In most of Midtown, it's the other way around, fifteen or twelve or, you know, fifteen and ten. And so we are incentivizing residential to fill up the entire building, um, with a higher density framework, I think the whole, through the whole neighborhood. So it's, you know, there's a world in which we could have set a higher commercial floor than residential floor area, which we didn't do, which would have incentivized commercial development as well. There's a world where in the M one sixty or the P two areas where we allow residential in more limited instances as we did in the past, which is like smaller buildings, we think they're fine to convert from class B and C office to residential. The larger footprint buildings that have the most jobs, we'd like to keep them as commercial, for example. So those are more of the instances I'm thinking about, um, not, not the, the, the eighty-four Garment District rules.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that clarification. Um, I think when it comes to the eight foot, the, the, um, the eight foot setback, um, that's allowed at the ground floor, um, you know, we, we discussed this extensively with, um, our zoning division. Um, you know, typically when we have gone in and instituted, um, really prescriptive street wall regulations, like a hundred percent of the street wall at the street line, um, and in many instances, developers end up coming back and asking for discretionary relief. So we think that that eight feet is actually sufficient to provide architectural flexibility without creating this break in the street wall, um, that we see with, for example, hotels, uh, which are at least twenty to twenty-five feet deep that do in fact break up the street wall. The eight feet just gives a little bit of relief to create things like small inch away vestibules, things like that so that developers don't have to come back and ask us for relief to, you know, move a window and pull the facade a little bit.
Again, I, I, I'm, I'm not suggesting a hundred percent street wall requirements. You can do an eighty percent street wall requirement for building entrances and, you know, the rules that are in place all over the zoning, um, uh, I just, I don't think the setbacks in Midtown that are intermittently talked through a very high density, high street wall location work particularly well. I think they just end up being poorly used, neither here nor there spaces. Um, and so again, you know, if you, to read the land use description in the department's own application, it reinforces the street wall character of these blocks, lost character of these blocks. One of the characteristics is just the street wall, right? Um, and so I just, I, I, again, I just, I don't, I don't understand the logic of it and we got some public feedback and I think it's worth just acknowledging some points.
Okay. I, I think, I think, um, I mean, I think, um, you heard what at least the logic was from the department. So I think what we should do is, um, answer the rest of the commissioner's questions and then if he has further questions for you, let's, let's give him a chance to do that. But why don't you first respond to what, what the commissioner said in full?
Right. I, I, I certainly agree with you. I think those breaks in the street wall that we've seen over the last fifteen, twenty years are detrimental to the pedestrian experience, which is why our text is not allowing those twenty-five, thirty-foot setbacks. It's just creating some flexibility for architectural expression. Um, and that's, that's the logic behind it. Um, the CPS bonus, um, I would agree with you, particularly, you know, some of these older, um, covered pedestrian spaces in Midtown, um, back when the rules weren't as robust for the required amenities and design. Um, they aren't as great as the POPS that we see today. Um, I think that with our updated DPS design regulations, with the robust review that we have in-house with our urban designers, those newer CPS, uh, spaces are, you know, really well trafficked, um, have a lot of amenities and then have actually become, you know, valuable places for people to gather where there's otherwise not a lot of public space. Um, to your point about Herald and Greeley Squares, um, we are still in active discussions with other departments, parks, DOT in terms of developing a package of, uh, improvements outside of zoning that could potentially be directed to Herald and Greeley Squares. Again, like our conversations about, uh, investments in the garment industry. Those conversations are still ongoing, so we don't have a lot of details around them at this point. But it's a, it's a huge focus of both us and elected officials.
Yeah, I guess we'll, we'll, I'd like Commissioner Benjamin to, I guess we'll wait for information. Again, I, I'm, you know, I tell you, just on these large department projects where there are pretty important policy issues at play, that answer feels a little less satisfactory to me than, you know, for the average private application where we know that there's a tug of war between the elected officials and the developers and, you know. But I think for these kinds of projects, it just seems to me like a public space strategy for Midtown is not a sort of, um, sidebar conversation. It's pretty essential to this thing making sense, as is the question of economic development. So I think this is the place where I get a little frustrated because it's like, it's just, it's, we're planning for the future of Midtown here and the answer is kind of like, well, we'll get back to you. And it's, well, it's the future of Midtown, not an incidental part of the city and these are not, I don't think, small questions. So again, I, I, you know, I think the challenge of sort of the role of the commission in this frankly, but I'm just a little disappointed that's where we are on a project like this. Um, you know, just want to like, like Commissioner Sorrell noted for the, uh, Pershing Square earlier, want to have a sense of how, where we're going, um, and there's some ambition around it and there's some potential for actually doing some useful things. I guess the last question is on the theater district, so.
Right. Um, that was going to be my last point. So, um, we are as part of this map amendment, removing that half block from the Midtown, uh, special district. The rationale behind that was to just create a uniform rational zoning map where we had, you know, a uniform land use framework for all of the M one, former M one six districts. We thought that made more sense than keeping that half block as a potential landing site for a potential future, uh, theater transfer of development rights. Um, and I think there's, you know, the Midtown, special Midtown district is huge. The theater sub-district is huge and there's, you know, lots of potential landing sites for, uh, those development rights, excess development rights. So we didn't see that this was, uh.
I, again, I'm sorry to sound argumentative, but I don't think that's accurate. I don't think there actually are a lot of development sites that can be landed in the theater district, um, given the amount of TDRs that exist on Broadway theaters. So there's actually, I think, fairly few. Um, again, it's, it's not a minor, it's not a major point in my mind. It just struck me as the point that I think former Commissioner, uh, Joe Rose made. I think makes some sense of why we'd undermine the theater district. Um, even in a small way, didn't really register for me. So thanks for answering the questions. I appreciate it, Andy.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Sorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Andy, for the presentation and for addressing our questions. This is very useful and for your summary. I, I really found it extremely useful. Um, I, I had a, through your comments, through your comments, the first one was like building on Commissioner Benjamin's, uh, questions on the industrial retention aspect of it. And again, thank you for clarifying clearly the, eh, 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 draft environmental impact statement, you know, didn't find significant adverse impacts on displacement. But, you know, when we're talking about a hundred and fourteen potentially displaced businesses, you know, this is a, there's a public kind of like concern here. Um, again, it's clear from your answer that, you know, you, the department had, believes that it's really the non-zoning approaches which, which could be more successful here. But, you know, in, in, so like addressing that, I, I would highly encourage you to rethink a little bit, uh, the opportunity that the department has right now. Uh, you have an industrial retention plan that is led by the department, which should focus on how can we use everything that we can to address the needs of these particular companies? And so in hearing that, you've already jumped to the conclusion that zoning is not going to be useful here. Makes me wonder even some of the things that we heard when we had that presentation in terms of the research behind the industrial retention plan where you showed us, the department showed us data that MX, the MX, the history of the MX had historically been able to control the laws of industrial jobs by introducing new uses. But requiring some basic, uh, presence of these, of industrial companies there, otherwise, you know, what's the point? And so anyway, I, I just, I'm just concerned with the fact that we're relying on other agencies, particularly where EDC's Green Economy Plan and the recent announcements for the BAT Climate Innovation Hub have been so, so controversial in terms of the companies that are being chosen to run these with such little transparency in terms of quite honestly, you know, how are we going to change the track record of, um, initiatives or, or rather, um, eh, eh, programs that in other places, in other cities have literally, you know, eh, increased accelerated gentrification. And so in my mind, this is a really good opportunity to bring things together and maybe kind of like be a little more, um, intentional in terms of, of, of addressing not just new businesses, but established companies here and a, a sector that, you know, as Commissioner mentioned, men mentioned, you know, is, is important for the entire ecosystem of the fashion industry. So I am not going to debate that it's not the amount of, uh, industrial space that was, you know, eh, considered in, in earlier versions. But, but I do feel that zoning has, uh, can go a long way and rather the lack of a strong zoning position can create, uh, speculation that can, you know, eh, increase the, the potential, this, this potential displacement. A hundred and fourteen companies is significant. Anyway, that was one thing. The other point that I wanted to make was on the, we heard a, a really strong concern from the public in terms of the stacking of incentives. And so I appreciated your, your response. Um, but I, I actually would like to see sort of like how many of these, like a table or a matrix that shows us what incentives can actually be stacked on where and where they can. I had suggested that we saw something like that when we were looking at the city of Yess. Um, we never saw it and so, but I'm wondering if, if maybe there's an opportunity just to see it there. And no, no, not for nothing, this is the first time that we see sort of like a neighborhood framework for like bringing all these new tools into action, which is also kind of like what makes me, eh, or what I, what I wanted to suggest, you know, you take into account when interpreting the, the research that you quoted. I'm going to read the Rollit twenty twenty-four article. That sounds very useful here. But these are research, eh, projects that don't yet reflect and like what's happening or will, will potent, could potentially happen with the city of Yess, the citywide, eh, eh, tax amendments. And so in thinking about it, it would be great if we can actually fully address that question for, for us but also for the public. Um, because if, if these, without understanding exactly which incentives can be stacked, you know, it's, it'll be, it's harder to understand really how, what are we, how safe are we in that regard? But also perhaps more importantly, what is it that we're planning for? Um, my last point.
Okay, well, let's, can we stop there for a second? Let's, let's just, let's, I, I think we can, I think we can answer this one. What are the benefits that can be stacked here?
So the, anything that's an FAR bonus, so increasing the net allowable, so the transit bonus or a POPS bonus or a CPS bonus, those can be used in combination. But the, there's a twenty percent cap on all of those, either individually or in combination. Um, and then the landmark TDR, which is the other major mechanism that we have, um, which is not a bonus, um, can stack on top of that. So you can have either twenty percent or thirty percent increase depending on the underlying zoning district. Um, if the underlying zoning district is fifteen FAR higher for commercial uses, it notches up to thirty percent. Um, so that can stack on top of the FAR bonuses. So it's a, it's a not insignificant potential, uh, increase in FAR.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. If, if we can maybe see where exactly that could apply and how much that FAR could be, that, that would be useful.
Okay, we, we can certainly send something around.
Thank you. And then just, just the last, a quick last comment, I won't take much time on this is, I, I, I thank you again for addressing and acknowledging the comments on the public bathrooms. I also understand your, your response. It's just that when, whenever we look at the individual proposals, you know, we, we, we can't really sort of like, eh, explore what, how, how farther we can go because we're not, it's out of, outside of scope to be looking at these programs. I mean, you cannot, I think you're, what you're saying too is here, we're not, you know, it would be out of scope to revise these entire programs. But given kind of like the specific proposals that are being, you know, presented here, I, I, I would encourage you to think about how do we start to balance between the things that maybe we can just introduce here and explore further individually? But what are the things that maybe, you know, we can just change as we move forward in terms of, you know, whether the, or, or, in terms of the, of POPS and, and covered public spaces? Um, even, even just in terms of evaluating what's the performance of those spaces and maybe what's the right place to do that? It just sounds to me that just saying no, let's do it individually doesn't really address the point.
Yeah, and I, you know, unfortunately, we can't do anything with the CPS or the POPS bonus that's going to be satisfactory for this particular project. But, you know, we, we have a POPS team that are constantly looking at the regulations and whether they make sense. Um, we're constantly thinking about updates that we can make. And on this point specifically, we're, we're hearing you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there other questions? Okay. Great. Thank you, thank you again, Andy, for the follow up and, uh, we, uh, we have a couple of follow ups for Commissioners, so thank you. Um, and, uh, I think we have one just last, this one will take fifteen seconds, just a quick point of clarification. Um, we're bringing Abby back on Western Rail Yards. Abby, welcome back. I know you had one point you wanted to clarify.
Yeah, thank you, um, and appreciate your patience at the very end of the day. Um, just one quick note, um, I misspoke on one part of the, uh, the permanently encumber restricted units for the city council modifications. Um, the. restricted units for the city council modifications. Um the requirement, I was correct in saying that the requirement was for the greater greater of either four hundred twenty um units, or uh of the four hundred twenty um residential rental units, or the uh other uh require, the other option would be twenty-five percent of the total residential rental units. I said the total residential units. That was incorrect. So I apologize and-
So you're adding the word rental units, just to be clear. Okay, so that's the point. So you you were close, but just we'll just add that. We're going to add the word rental units, and then we're clear now. Thank you, Abby, for for clarifying that. We got it. Thank you. Okay. Sarah, do we have anything else on the agenda for today?
No, we don't.
Okay. Then uh with that, with lots of appreciation, we'll see you all in uh two weeks' time on Monday. Uh I guess that puts us on the sixteenth of uh-
Correct.
Of June, right? So sixteenth, if my math is correct. Okay, with that, thank you all very much for your time and attention. We are adjourned.
Meeting ended for forty-eight.